Hudson Board of Education for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. We're going to open this evening with a moment of silence for a colleague and friend who passed away suddenly this week, Damaris D'Amore Lang. So let's have a moment of silence, and then we're going to have some remarks, please. I'll go first because Damaris came on the board with me four years ago, and, you know, I always feel we do moments of silence to sort of acknowledge the rupture that we feel as people, that it's not something that just passes. I'm sorry, am I going to get motioned? Her passing this week was a reminder that things, you know, events can be very cruel and swift, but also that one of the capabilities we have as people is to choose to bring feelings into the world that don't exist in and of themselves. Kindness, peace, community, things like that. When she came on the board, for me, you know, she's a very big personality, and we would always joke that, like, for most people, they're sort of nice in public, and they let it all out at home. And I joke with her that she lets it all out in public, but at home, she was like always thoughtful, and this kindness and this thoughtfulness that came out from her. And, you know, we always joked about it. And so I, we talked as a board and really want to, for the small gesture that it is, to dedicate this meeting tonight to her, again, just as a reminder of that desire to work together for the benefit of others, which I think she would, which she would like. So anybody else wants to speak?
I'll go next. I wanted to express my sincere condolences. Our heart goes out to Dr. Lang's family, her husband and her son, and just deep sadness of the loss of our former colleague and friend, Damaris. She was a staunch advocate for equity. She had the sharpest of intellects, very well-rounded in a lot of different areas, and she brought a lot of rigor to everything she did and passion. She was a tireless champion for diversity, equity, and inclusion. The other day, we were at a policy meeting, and we were reading over something when I was on the policy committee with her, and I remember her passion that she brought to that discussion and the reflection that came from it. So I went back and I saw, I think it was one of her last board meetings when she was leaving the board, that she told us to embrace the diversity that we uniquely embody. And she didn't just say that, it wasn't just talk, she walked the walk. She was someone who listened very, very intently with a need to understand, not to formulate her retort, but really to understand where you were coming from and to appreciate that unique diversity. I think she really appreciated those differences, and differences in each other, where we came from, but also in thought and perspective, and she really valued that. And I think that is a rare quality, especially in these days, the ability to really listen with a kind of a sharp, a clean slate, so to speak. And I think as a result of all those qualities put together in one, it gave her a unique ability to be a bridge amongst different opinions. And I think that was a gift that she gave all of us, the ability to bridge differing points of view and bring people together. So I think we've lost a tireless champion, a superior intellect, a friend, someone who cared deeply and connected us all. May she rest in peace and let her legacy live on so that we can keep the work doing that she wanted us to do and keep listening to each other with an open mind, because I think that's what she would want.
Thank you.
Just quickly, Damaris used to send the longest text messages. I don't know if anybody here ever got a text message from Damaris Lang. You know, you kind of had to block out a little bit of your day, you know, to kind of read it and to process it and, you know, and eventually reply, you know, usually probably just easier to give her a call. But just echoing what you said, Maureen, I just, yeah, I don't think I, I knew a lot of people in Hastings who just gave such as much of a dam as Damaris did, and we should be so fortunate to have people like Damaris in our village who advocate. And, yeah, I just, it's, it's just a massive and absolute massive loss for our village and obviously for her family, and just, she is truly a replace, irreplaceable person.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share, as a parent of two seventh graders, I just think often about her son, who she left behind, and she was a tireless fighter for him and for all children, and she fought bravely, fiercely, and with great intellect. And I just hope as a community, we can continue to hold him and watch him and fight for him as she would have done, because I think that's one of the best ways we can hold her light and let it glow forward, and also what she would want us to do for her son and for all children.
Thank you.
I'm still in shock personally. I still do not really, cannot really comprehend this. Damaris taught me a great lesson, which was that you can really argue and fight and disagree with someone and then just laugh and hug and go get some coffee. And she and I had that kind of relationship.
A lot of coffee.
And I just, I really still do not believe this. It's still kind of unbelievable to me.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you.
David, do you want to say something?
I have to echo what Teresa said. I never was on the board with Damaris, but I was on a very different issue with the village, two different sides of a topic, and we went at it. And exactly like you said, every time I've ever seen Damaris, we hugged and we laughed and we talked about how just moving the work forward, and we can disagree, and that was okay. And it's very rare to meet people that you can have that kind of a relationship with. And she will be missed.
Thank you, David.
I'm usually the crier here. I think we all are tonight. I think everybody, everything that you've said about her is so beautiful and so represents all the different parts of her. And I keep thinking about the last time I saw her was just a couple weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago, at the farmer's market, when she was representing Peacock and just full of life. And so I think that this was so shocking, and I think to hear people talk about her and really capture her spirit and her passion and her breadth and depth of knowledge and her commitment to the district and to equity for everybody, and certainly her devotion to her son always came through loud and clear. And I think that, I think this is probably true for everybody here, that hearing about this, it just rattles your soul. I mean, I don't even know any other way to describe it. It's haunting, it's haunting, and it has, it continues to be haunting. And I think that we, as everyone has said, and as Bill beautifully wrote in his letter to families and parents, that part of how we can best honor her is in the work that we do and the work that we put, put forward and push forward and sort of keep her in our thoughts and recognize her at times when it's appropriate and dedicate some of the work that we do to her and continue to embrace her family and support them in this process. And it's a, it's a, it's a loss, that there really aren't exactly very good words to describe it. And I'm glad that we could take some time to think about her and honor her.
Thank you, Jenny.
So for superintendent, at one level, I speak for the staff, and Amy's in the room, and I had, I learned about the Dr. Lang's death early the morning after I'd just seen her at 6:30 the night before. And I, I think it is fitting in the universe that she was so powerful in, that literally in her last hour, she was in the Farragut Middle School attending a Dignity Act program, before which she sent me a long text saying, "Dr. McKinsey." And I say, "Oh, great love," because as she would get rolling, Dr. Lang, I loved her for saying that, and she, "Dr. McKinsey." So we would roll and roll. But she wanted me to know she was going to be there. At the end, I had to run to a policy committee meeting, and I said, "You used to be on that." And she smiled, yes, yes, big hug. But it was fitting that that's where she was still supporting and insisting, and the quote I put in the letter was word for word, "Let me come back to the next morning." I was learning about this at home very early, talking to the mayor, talking to the chief police, thank you, Dr. Samansky, Melissa were stepping up with Amy, stepping up with each of the other principals, because this is the point, her impact was out and it was deeply in. So staff across the district were struggling, hurting. A paragraph not in this letter that should not have been in the letter, because this law is about Dr. Lang and family, but a paragraph was in there about the hurt within the district. And I want everyone to know that impact came through, and knowing her going on five years, that great passion, I watched that passion evolve to the point where, and I'm not going to name names, but Son has been in school since Friday. Son has been in school being embraced because as Jean talked with Mr. Lang, John said, "This is where Son should be and wants to be." And that is something that Dr. Lang, I first met in the communications class. So for five, four, or five years later, in fourth grade, seeing somebody singing on stage here, Amy, right? Last year is a sixth grader, singing in a performance. So just great evolution, and I think it's such a lovely way, I know a name, but I'm going to keep it private, just the evolution there that she lived for, and we can live that out. So thank you, staff, faculty, administration, for being there for Dr. Lang, because she was there for you, and you're now there for her.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Awesome. Okay. We're going to move on, I think apropos to the tenure recommendations, we're kind of considering the enlarging of the Hastings family, so to speak. So as a board, we had a chance a couple weeks ago to look over the enthusiastic recommendations from Ms. Kelter and Mrs. Karaskio. Are there any questions or comments, or if you guys want to take us through anything before we vote, or?
Amy, would you like to come up and speak on behalf of Kristin?
Okay, good evening, Amy.
Good evening, everybody. I am here to speak on behalf of Kristin. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Mary Angela Sanchez, who wrote her recommendation to all of you. But before I begin, I do just want to tell you that Kristin came to us in the end of 2022, when we had a new position that had opened mid-year, and we were worried, because you never know mid-year who you're going to find. And when we found Kristin, it was an absolute grand slam. We're talking about not only an outstanding educator, but a staff member who has worked as a professional developer, so she worked with teachers, a teacher of teachers and a teacher leader, and you'll hear Mary Angela's words, how much we've benefited from having Kristin on our team. So we are so excited, but I'll read Mary Angela's words now. It is with great enthusiasm that I recommend Kristin Karaskio for tenure. Throughout her tenure in the Hastings School District, Kristin has demonstrated unwavering dedication, professionalism, and compassion in serving some of our most vulnerable and high-need students. As an educator with extensive experience in special education, Kristin has consistently gone above and beyond to ensure that all students receive the individualized support and services they need to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Her deep understanding of diverse learning needs and her ability to implement inclusive and effective supports have had a transformative impact on student outcomes. Kristin is a reflective practitioner who continuously evaluates and enhances her teaching. She assesses each lesson, using a detailed checklist and provides students with opportunities to reflect on their own learning. She makes on-the-spot decisions based on student engagement, ensuring that her lessons remain dynamic and responsive. Kristin also uses observation feedback to improve and adapt future instruction, demonstrating her commitment to continuous growth. It's two and a half pages, so I'm going to keep going. So I just want you to know that as you're listening, I want you to reflect on the unbelievable impact you've had. So keep thinking about that, okay? Collaboration and professional learning are essential to Kristin's practice. She consistently engages in dialogue with colleagues and seeks out research-based strategies to increase student engagement. Kristin has successfully implemented techniques from Kagan Cooperative Learning, including stand-up, hand-up, pair-up, sage and scribe, and timed pair-share, which have significantly enhanced participation and collaboration in her classroom. In addition to maintaining accurate records for tracking IEP goals, Kristin has created student-friendly portfolios that empower students to take ownership of their learning. These portfolios include self-assessment components, goal-tracking, and celebrations of progress. Her communication with families is equally strong. She maintains consistent, transparent, and positive communication regarding student progress, behavior, and successes. This year, she developed individualized behavior plans that serve as daily communication tools between home and school, an initiative that parents have praised for keeping them informed and engaged. Kristin also facilitates team meetings for students with IEPs, ensuring clear communication and collaboration amongst all members of the IEP team. She promotes a holistic approach to student support by bringing together multiple stakeholders to develop unified strategies. Additionally, Kristin sends home daily certificates of celebration that highlight each child's growth in learning, kindness, and excellence, building confidence and reinforcing a positive classroom culture. Since joining the Hillside Community, Kristin has actively contributed to professional learning and school improvement initiatives. This is one of the best parts. As a member of the ELA Committee, she volunteered her class as a learning lab to pilot the spelling inventory. After analyzing data and collaborating with colleagues, she took a leadership role, in turn keying this work to her team and establishing spelling benchmarks for the year. She also participated in summer curriculum work, helping to design student-facing learning progressions that now serve as valuable conferring tools for teachers. That's the leader piece that we were talking about. It was a win for us. As a member of the Hillside Literacy Team, Kristin helped present the school's comprehensive literacy program to the community and demonstrated a Hegarty phonemic awareness lesson to showcase best practices in literacy instruction. Her commitment to literacy is evident in her consistent integration of multisensory phonics instruction and her daily use of the Hegarty Program, both of which have led to measurable gains in student reading development. This year, Kristin further deepened her expertise by completing a three-day PAF, Preventing Academic Failure, training expanding her knowledge of phonics and reading intervention. Looking ahead, Kristin continues to demonstrate leadership and initiative. For the 25-26 school year, she is serving as a member of Hillside's PBIS team, where she contributes to enhancing school culture and promoting high behavioral expectations for all students. Her commitment to fostering a positive, inclusive learning environment is evident in everything she does. Beyond her instructional excellence, Kristin is a collaborative colleague and trusted team member. She readily offers guidance, models best practices, and shares her expertise in differentiation and engagement. Her willingness to support others and her reflective, growth-oriented mindset have had a positive impact on the entire school community. Kristin embodies the core values of our school district, equity, excellence, and integrity. Her advocacy for students, her ongoing professional growth, and her positive influence on school culture make her an outstanding candidate for tenure. Speaking as Mary Angela, but adding in myself, I wholeheartedly and without reservation endorse Kristin Karaskio for this well-deserved recognition. I am confident she will continue to make meaningful and lasting contributions to our students, staff, and community for years to come. Kristin Karaskio. We hope that you will vote on her tenure.
Thank you.
That was really special. I just wanted to say thank you so much to the board, thank you to Dr. McCursie and Dr. Samansky, thank you so much, Amy, Mike, Mary Angela, for all your support. Hastings is truly a very special community. I am so happy that the stars aligned and landed me here, and I'm just thrilled and looking forward to many more years here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now Drew Wendell will speak on behalf of Vicki Kelter.
Hey, Drew. Hey, good evening.
To speak into the mic, sir.
I know, right? Usually I'm loud enough without it. It is with great pleasure that I have the honor of recommending Mrs. Victoria Kelter for tenure. Ms. Kelter attended and graduated from Hastings School District, and has noted on multiple occasions, her desire to give back to the community that provided her with such a great education. She started her career journey in Hastings School District as a student teacher in 2013, then as a substitute teacher and a JV girls volleyball coach in 2014. After a few years working as an athletic trainer for a physical therapy company and as a part-time physical education and health teacher at Blindbrook, Vicki took on a role as the Hastings Athletic Trainer from 2019 to 2022, which transitioned into a .8 physical education teacher position at Farragut Middle School in March 2021. Then in December 2021, Vicki landed a full-time physical education teacher job at Hastings High School. Throughout her time here, Ms. Kelter has been commended for creating nurturing, creating, nurturing, and enduring, ensuring a positive classroom environment for all her students. Ms. Kelter notes that it is professionally important to her that her students are provided with a warm, safe, and supportive learning environment where they can express themselves freely. It is clear and evident that Ms. Kelter has built many relationships and a strong rapport with her students, colleagues, and community members, both past and present. Vicki consistently earned ratings of effective and highly effective throughout her probationary period at Hastings High School. Being a professional educator involves much more than instruction within a classroom. During her probationary period, Ms. Kelter has involved herself in the overall Hastings community and developed her skills through professional learning. In addition to teaching physical education at the high school and middle school, Ms. Kelter has also served as a middle school advisor and on the POLHL Behavior Charter Committee. Outside the classroom, Ms. Kelter has supervised athletic events, chaperoned school class trips, and supervised the fitness room. She is also a teacher representative for the Hastings Alumni Association Scholarship Committee, and is seen frequently supporting all student activities, including sports, plays, concerts, fundraisers, and academic competitions. It is this, for this many reasons noted above, that I would like to recommend Mrs. Victoria Kelter for the tenure as a teacher of physical education in Hastings on Hudson Union Free School District.
And Vicki, could you please stand, just to be recognized? Thank you.
Vicki, you can come forward.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the tenure recommendations for Ms. Karaskio and Mrs. Kelter?
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
And hats off to your supporting cast, who are here in force. And as the board may know, both the now-tenured faculty know, because when we met earlier, we have a larger celebration at which the two of you are required to attend with your supporting cast, because we have cake and refreshment and all the rest. And Vicki, maybe then you'll want to go to the mic. And I would like to thank your beautiful child for echoing all the wonderful thoughts all through this meeting. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Congratulations again. Moving on to the main presentation of the evening, Dr. Zmansky, together with Ms. Walters, Ms. Lee, if I'm getting anybody else out, we're going to take a look at the FMS curriculum work in ELA and math.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by recognizing and thanking my colleagues who are in the room, and one who was about to be in the room and had an emergency, pulled into Hillside and had to pivot. He's okay, but he had to handle that. So Dan Waldeck will not be joining us this evening, but I would like to recognize Sarah Walters, English Department Chairperson, and Jennifer Lee, English teacher, who have been not only leading and intimately involved in the work, but you'll get a different perspective other than just mine, which I thought might be refreshing, helpful, and just provide a little bit more of a systemic point of view. So I'd like to begin by first talking to you about my own leadership-guiding philosophy for curriculum work in our district. So I'll speak to two different types of curriculum work that I've been leading, and the first is inquiry work. And curriculum inquiry work is predicated under the ideas that strong learning institutions are committed to continuous improvement, and that is not because there's a deficit, it's because we as a system exist amongst other systems. So we are either getting better or getting worse comparatively, because research moves, other places move, and it's really important that we're staying cutting-edge and learning and growing, and that all of the members of the district are learners, myself included. So this curriculum inquiry work is really undergirded by that, continuous improvement being an excellent thing at all times, and again, not a deficit. The second thing is that strong learning institutions recognize and nurture all members as learners. So when we're thinking about people in the system moving forward, we're talking about the students, and also we're talking about faculty, we're talking about staff, we're talking about families, all of us together as learners, right? That the whole system is in a constant state of continuous improvement. And the next bullet, the Principles and Practices of Improvement Science, BRIKE, has really offered a strong paradigm to support change efforts that are curriculum inquiry. So it's the idea that you identify a problem of practice or an opportunity, and that you're really centering the people that are closest to the work, and typically, it is looking at what's going on with the children. Sometimes it can be a faculty problem of practice, but when it comes to our curriculum inquiry work, it is really about the students and keeping what we do closest to thinking about and centering them. Focusing on variations of performance, so when we see an anomaly, we get curious about it. So why is this happening here and not happening there? Or why do we see this number in a score, but we don't see it there? Or we say, "What's going on in this one space that isn't happening in other spaces?" And so we're looking at those variations, and we're looking at them as opportunities, and basically taking strengths to move things forward. The next bullet is around seeing the system that produces the current outcomes. It's never just one thing that's contributing to why a problem might exist, it's many things. So it's around being curious and thinking about what's the biggest bang for the buck to be able to move things forward in the improvement effort. We cannot improve at scale what we cannot measure. So thinking about success metrics, what is it we're trying to accomplish, and what is the evidence that we're moving in that direction? And then thinking about disciplined inquiry to drive improvement, that's a process-oriented perspective, where we're always thinking about what needs to happen next. And then finally, accelerating learning through networked communities. So thinking of us as part of a larger whole, right? So it's not one classroom, it's many classrooms working together, which is why it's so important when we talk about groups of teachers working together, even though we've talked even at this table about the pros and the cons of coverages and subs and trying to fit it all in, being able to have a networked community where we synergize and we learn and grow from each other, and we're part of a team that collaborates on the improvement effort is the way to go. So in short, there's a problem of practice, we pop together, we learn together, we design together, and then we grow together. We pop together, we learn together, we design together, and then we grow together. Another type of curriculum work that's been happening in the district is what I like to refer to as curriculum initiative work. And these are my terms, these are not necessarily technical terms, but the guiding leadership philosophy there, you'll see that first bullet is the same. Strong learning institutions are committed to continuous improvement. That is regardless, whether it's an inquiry or whether it's an initiative, that there is this commitment to ongoing improvement. And the second, leaders must at times make key decisions to efficiently and effectively address significant problems of practice that emerge. We'll be talking tonight about one area, that is an inquiry approach, and one that's more of an initiative approach with some inquiry elements that will be forthcoming. With an initiative, thinking about student performance and progress data must drive the decision-making, and that is also the same with an inquiry. But the idea with this initiative approach is that there's student performance and progress data that's necessitating a more efficient change process, and we have to get in there and take action a bit more swiftly. Input throughout the change process remains an integral priority, so making sure to the greatest extent possible, when there does need to be a leadership decision, that's more of a push or a pull, that still, we make sure that we value the expertise of our professionals and we're seeking constant input to the greatest extent possible. And the leadership philosophy there, together to the greatest extent practicable. So I just wanted to frame that because both of those philosophies you'll see showing up in the work that we're going to be sharing. So we'll begin with the inquiry. So we've been engaging in curriculum inquiry work at the middle school in the area of ELA, particularly in the area of writing, and I would like to recognize, thank, and laud Sarah Walters, our Department Chairperson, who has taken the lead as the instructional leader, guiding this work and helping to drive all of the wonderful things that are happening in the writing inquiry work. And I will talk about how we use a curriculum review cycle, and this has been in place. It was designed by the professional learning community and committee, sorry. And there are four phases. There's a phased approach. So that first phase is inquiry, analysis, research, and planning. I won't read through it again, it's not an unfamiliar review cycle, I'm just bringing it up again. Design and development is phase two. Phase three is around implementation. Phase four is evaluation. This is not necessarily a one-to-one match with what happens from one year to the next. Certain things can move quickly, certain curriculum inquiries can move a bit more slowly, but this is the general idea. And this was previously presented when we were talking about establishing the curriculum review cycle. So again, just bringing it to the forefront. So as it pertains to the middle school ELA inquiry, we investigated data, and we obtained lots of information from the expert professionals who are closest to the work in the classrooms and see what's going on in the day-to-day. We identified a problem of practice slash improvement opportunity. So teachers were interested in heightened coherence for writing, and that was an area that they noticed was in need of an additional lens. We selected a professional thought partner, we did vet a couple of different people, and we ended up with Diane Cunningham, who is well-known throughout the region, and she's been an excellent thought partner for us, and she's been facilitating the work directly and really has offered a wealth of knowledge and expertise. We identified faculty participants. In this particular case, even though typically in the department chairperson structure, it's six through 12 is the range that the department chair works with, we also linked arms, recognizing you cannot have fifth grade alone on an island in a middle school. So this inquiry involved teachers, grades five through eight, so there were representatives from fifth grade who participated. It included special education teachers, it included Dr. Denise Mateo Toledo as E&amp;L Coordinator and Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator. So having lots of different lenses and participants in this work, so we could all learn and grow together. And then we planned for the inquiry work, and that happened both behind the scenes, during department meetings, on the phone with Diane Cunningham, trying to work it all through, making sure we had lots of input and we were aligned around how to best move forward. And then finally, we engaged in the process. So I am going to turn it over to our fabulous faculty extraordinaire to talk about the work.
All right. So I'll just give a little bit also more context on how we arrived on wanting to work on kind of being more cohesive and more vertically aligned in how we teach writing. So, you know, department meetings are usually six through eight, and we have noticed and talked about that we are each teaching different skills. I teach ninth and 12th grade, but I've taught all of the high school grades, and wondering kind of why aren't things sticking from year to year as well as they might. And so we wanted to take a look at how do we each teach writing. Immediately, the sixth-grade teacher said, like, fifth grade has to be involved. And then the opportunity to have everyone's co-teachers, E&amp;L teachers, it just otherwise, without this work, we couldn't have been in the same room, kind of looking together. And then, so kind of first year, we ended up, we'll go into kind of our process of how we did this, but we ended up managing to kind of look at both our narrative writing, assignments, skills, rubrics, as well as argument writing, and being able to develop a five-through-eight rubric that is teacher-friendly and student-friendly, and start to realize really the impact of using common language from fifth through eighth and even all the way, you know, now through high school. And then Jen will talk a little bit about our focus for this year.
Thank you.
So as mentioned, we spent a lot of last year creating rubrics and assignments that flow with grades five to eight. And now this year, we're going to implement them, work collaboratively, and reflect on the pros and cons of what we brought in last year and see how we can refine it. So earlier in September, the ELA department, as well as our co-teachers, collaborated to make lessons for each grade, and then we're going to have intervisitation. So what that would mean, for example, me in eighth grade, I would create a lesson, collaborate with my other eighth-grade ELA teacher and his co-teacher, we create the unit and lesson plan together, and then I would conduct the lesson, he and his co-teacher would come observe me, as well as my department chair and our consultant. We will create feedback for each other, say what we liked about the lesson, what could have been improved upon, and as we discuss overall, how we can improve going forward and what we can reflect from this experience.
Okay. So you're going to help me with clicking on certain things. Okay. So with, and you know, we won't go through everything, but at our first meeting, if you could scroll to page three of this one. So I'll just kind of briefly tell you how we tackled identifying some of these goals. So, um, let's see, yes, the big picture sketching. So this was really interesting and useful for us. We basically kind of put assignments and units up together and then had the focus of both Portrait of a Hastings Learner, as well as, you know, ELA standards. And in another slide or two, we'll show you kind of, we need, you know, looking at what do people teach fifth through eighth was a huge undertaking. And so she, we sort of had the standards broken down, and we color-coded which assignment we felt covered those standards, which helped us to see where are we hitting really strong, and I'll show you some of, you know, highlight some of the things where it's excellent across the board, and then we were able to see where are there some holes. And then, so if we can go back, go to the next link, the...
All right. So after we aligned and we saw what we were teaching, what assignments we were giving, it's time to analyze each individual assignment and see how consistent and authentic it was across grades five to eight. So for example, on the seventh, eighth grade team, we looked at our argumentative writing assignment. So I brought in a sample of an assignment page I would give to my students, and my seventh and eighth grade counterparts did the same. And as a group, we looked over the expectations and compared them to the state standards. We wanted to evaluate how authentic the assignment was to student learning, so considering its purpose, its process, and the common language being used. The authenticity is super important, because we want students to be able to apply their skills and learning ELA to other real-world writing samples. So when we looked at the assignment, we asked ourselves, is it something that only the teacher would look at, or is it something that they could apply and use elsewhere? For example, if they're writing an argumentative piece, are they writing an essay, or could they also write a persuasive letter or a presentation? How else can we demonstrate these skills? In addition, the common language was super important, because we wanted students to be able to carry these skills from grades five to eight. And if we changed some of the language we use or the expectations, it might be harder for students to follow. So for example, the state standards say that students should be able to create a claim as part of their argument. They don't necessarily say a thesis. While thesis is a good synonym, we wanted to, at least for the assignment, have the word "claim" be more present, so students can have that commonality going across their learning experience.
Okay. So if you now go to the third tab, this is where we'll see how we sort of landed on some of our strengths. So scroll a little further. Okay. And it's, my vision is changing with the years. Go back up a little. Sorry, back one, okay. And I'm going to do my best to read from as far away as I am. But the things where we were really hitting across the mark were related to clarity of assignment, providing models for students, providing clear rubrics. So the teaching piece and the setup of the assignments was very, very clear. And then, I think it's down a little more, but I'll just say, I'll let it in case it's not, where we saw things not happening as much was related to kind of student ownership over their writing and being able to evaluate peer-edited students being the ones who are learning how to internalize some of these writing skills and not relying so much just on teachers to kind of initiate. So that became a big focus for us, was in addition to creating clear rubrics and what are we teaching, how can we support students in being able to give each other feedback and then, you know, look at their own work?
And lastly, we're going to discuss supporting peer feedback. The last slide, please, the last link. So picking back off what you said before, one skill that we want students to emphasize was giving each other feedback. And what feedback is compared to giving editing advice, even suggesting like, or taking a more, I'm trying to think of the word. What it means to really give feedback versus give an evaluation of someone else's writing. So we use a method called TAG, which means to tell something you like about someone's work, ask a question, and then give a suggestion. And we discuss how students can work collaboratively with one another and how they can learn from each other, rather than simply just waiting for the teacher's response. So how they can learn from us educators and how they can learn from their peers.
Okay. And so this idea of, you know, writing for a purpose, that you are, you know, having someone else look at your work, what you were trying to think of, I know, because it was actually your phrase, that you're not grading, you're editing, right? And that that's a huge difference in how to look at a piece of writing. And, I mean, remarkably, kids at very young ages can give incredibly cogent and exact feedback. So let's see, let's go, I think we're ready for the next slide, which is about sort of... So that was kind of last year. And this year, we had the visits. And now for what's from here, you know, teachers, basically, we've talked about, we had a Zoom at our last department meeting about what else people would like, and there's a real desire to figure out, can we have some sort of authentic writing, short, in-class piece that is done at the beginning and ending of the year, because the various tests, whether it's screen or test, those are generally multiple choice, and they don't evaluate writing. And also, we want it to be something that's guaranteed every student takes, there's not a grade attached to it. So our focus for the second half of this year is to create some kind of authentic writing prompt that we can give in the beginning of the year, and it would be similar for all grades, because then we're able to kind of see growth, return to it at the end of the year, there's opportunity to, you know, when a new teacher can look at the previous year's students. So that's kind of our, developing that is what's going to happen in our January meeting. Then between January and March, we'll be able to kind of pilot this with students, give feedback to one another about how did it go, and hopefully then be able to better understand how we might want to use this moving forward. So, you know, I will, I'll just say that it's been, teachers have really remarked on how helpful it's been to have sort of unified criteria. We've noticed students, because we did start this work last year, like comfort with language in talking about their writing, you know, is following them and giving them confidence. So I think that probably sums up kind of the focus of the work we've been doing.
So I can just say a huge thank you. It's been really such a point of pride to watch people engaging in this work and to feel like it's beneficial and to see the impact that everyone has on each other. And truly, from the bottom of my heart, I really want to thank you both, you happen to be in the room, but the whole team. It's really been very rigorous work. It's not for the faint of heart, and it's been very exciting and really connected with the research around what moves students to the greatest extent possible quickly. That feedback piece is really, really critical. So just really a huge thank you.
Yes, definitely. Any questions or comments?
No. Well, first, I just want to thank you. This was tremendous. I loved learning about your process, hearing about how everyone was working together with your intervisitations, looking at data. I mean, really, I feel like I learned so much from this presentation, and I'm just so grateful that you're here tonight, that you're sharing it, and that you're putting in all the work. I guess one of my questions was, so you're doing the intervisitations, which is so powerful, and you've done this work with the middle school, do you see it sort of moving up to the high school and down to the elementary school? What are your thoughts about that and the process there?
So the elementary school kind of has already completed, I think they had a three- or four-year cycle with Gravity Goldberg, and so they really have a sequenced kind of reading and writing curriculum. And then high school, we're a little bit different in that we have a department office, so we are constantly working with one another. I mean, we talk every day, and also just the nature of our schedules, like we are teaching different, there's a lot of movement. So we, nearly all of us have taught every grade. So it is, and we thankfully have been pretty steady also in our, you know, staffing, that it's a group that we've worked together for about three years now, you know, our most recent hired folks. So, but in our department meetings, yes, the middle school teachers will be sharing with the high school teachers the rubrics we've developed, because it's, you know, great for us to see this stuff starts really young and, you know, does continue.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Also, just to piggyback on that, thank you, thank you both, thank you, the whole department. You know, as a parent, the child graduated two years ago now, and an 11th grader, you know, writing is so central to thought, you know, to how you study, how you remember things, and it's such a high-level skill, high-order skill. It's very difficult even to think about how you teach it effectively, how you scaffold it, how you build upon what exists before. So challenge is enormous, and I really thank you, because as a parent, again, it's something that we always sort of hoped for, there would be more there, especially in the middle school. So it's extremely heartening, again, as a parent and as a board member, to see the progress being made. So thank you.
Just to follow up, as you were saying that, I was going to say, well, as a parent of a child who graduated 20 years ago, who I think...
Who I taught.
Sarah, you taught in your first year. I'll never forget what you did. It was incredible. They did a writing assignment where they went to...
Buffet de Lagarde.
Saint-Jean, into the French restaurant in town, and had lunch and had to write about it. I thought it was great.
That's amazing.
But that was a journalism class, I think. But I... But I just want to say, and he's now back in Hastings, so his kids can go through the school system. It's wonderful as a board member to hear teachers, to hear this kind of presentation. It just makes it so real and to hear the kind of time and effort and work that you've put into this. And I hope it's as rewarding to do as it feels on this end to hear, and it's, it's really great. And I appreciate both the work and the time and also coming in the evening to a board meeting to present it. I think we all really, it, it just feels, it's very, it's palpable and it's, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the second half is on the math initiative.
That's right.
Yeah.
So the middle school has also been very hard at work on a math initiative. And so we are, I'm going to just present chronologically of what's been happening. So we have been doing a lot around mathematics, and we've had a lot of feedback around mathematics, both from the data that came from the state of the district and looking at the assessment scores, talking through what's going on with the enrichment. There was a sixth-grade enrichment and seventh-grade enrichment class that were offered this year and scheduled this year. And that, that was something that was new, that was piloted at the middle school. So we, and we've had a lot of feedback, and there's been quite a long time where we've been looking at how do we best strengthen our mathematics program. So I would like to recognize Dan Waldak as middle school principal, with whom I've been working very closely, and also Greg Stevens, mathematics department chairperson, who has been a key partner, and three of us have been linking arms and working on this together. And it will be then moving down into the classrooms physically and then moving into the student work physically. So we're, we're trying to figure all of this out, and here's the sequential piece so far that's happened. So we've standardized Google Classroom pages for grade seven. We came to understand that there was a difference in how assignments were accessible and communication was accessible to parents, depending on which seventh-grade teacher they had. So we standardized that, and I want to recognize and thank the teachers for taking that on. And really, Chris Lumbo took a lead as an educator to get in there and help, as a veteran educator on that team, to help with that standardization so that there's more consistency in what's being presented and what families have access to. Then there's been a lot of data analysis. So step one, the people that you see there, started with the initial data analysis. So we went into the database and we were taking a look at student performance data and really trying to understand what was happening. And we've been zooming in on that grade seven because, if you recall, the state of the district, that's where we saw a much lower percentage of students meeting the proficiency standard. That's also where we're having some discussions around, can we get to a space for an algebra for all? And so we've really centered our attention right now there because that is a key element of trying to figure out our, our trajectory for math courses essentially. So the second step is Dan and the math teachers that you see up here and the mathematics interventionists went together, and there was a replicated process where the data was analyzed there at that level too. And teachers provided feedback and Dan led that. He was going to speak to that and could not be here tonight. He was the one that was facilitating that. But being able to take the data from the district approach, then taking it to the classroom approach, and then we did engage in some staffing shifts. We were thinking about who might be best suited where within the district, whether it be high school or middle school, and we thought about making some of those changes. And those changes were made. So we changed some mathematics staffing. There was the addition of the mathematics interventionist position, and that's been posted, so we're moving forward there. We recognize that through MTSS, we have a number of students that need to be serviced, and we only have a certain number of people to do that servicing, so we are shoring that up. And then recently, I sent out a seventh-grade differentiated instruction survey to explore the possibility of additional seventh-grade enrichment. Because we, we did receive feedback that there were far more families interested in that enrichment course than we had seats. And we had a lot of, based on the criteria that was set by the middle school, we had a lot of kids that were very close, right? And so thinking about how do we do a better job with that? So where we are currently with that is we've posted, we've, we've identified through the survey, and I'm doing approximate numbers right now, there were approximately 53 respondents to the survey. We had a handful of those were actually duplicates, so where a family responded twice, and that could be because either the reminder I sent had a little distance between the initial, if you'd like to take the survey, or it might have been a different family member took the survey on behalf of the child. So we eliminated some of those duplicates. We had some people that were not in seventh grade respond, and so we eliminated those. We then had just a couple more that didn't meet the criteria. And the criteria for that additional enrichment was performing at or above the benchmark currently and using the STAR diagnostic assessment, and that was explicit. And for those who were not, we made sure that they were receiving a different type of differentiated instruction, right? So thinking about how do we get more of the right stuff to the right kids, for lack of a better terminology? And so we have now created what we believe to be five groups for core instruction but accelerated mathematics in terms of, sorry, enrichment mathematics. So having the opportunity to participate in that enrichment. We have one group that we anticipate will be running before school, four that we anticipate will be running after school. And we have first posted that internally, and it's just like we did with the Hillside Learning Program. So it's direct supplemental instruction, it's teaching, it's, it's core program. And so from there, we are going to work on what we believe will be twice weekly for 10 weeks for 30 minutes to give a boost in terms of enrichment with the understanding that what we're trying to do is recognize that there is a cohort of seventh graders that have been, been receiving additional enrichment. Now we will have other cohorts receiving additional enrichment. So we have a bit more parity in thinking about pathways into that potential algebra as eighth graders. All right? So just wanted to frame it, that's actually where we are right now. And then on the agenda tonight, you will see a business item, and that is for a thought partner, Anshula Sobrin, whom Greg and I, Greg Stevens and I both respect so highly. She's an expert in the region, in the area of mathematics and in the area of data, and she's up at Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses. And so we'd like to link arms with her for the development of a multi-year plan. And so that's what you'll see on the agenda tonight, a proposal to backwards map, and pardon the typo there, it should say backward map, our mathematics curriculum. There was a lot of math going on in my brain clearly when I wrote this slide. Backward map the curriculum. So the idea is that we have a very clear pathway that students will travel with their content, which may require doing some combining around where standards live now and where they could live, so that we can expedite access opportunities to that algebra for all pathway, which is where we're hoping to get to, without having this idea of you've missed a year of instruction. So we want to engage teachers in that design process, so they are integral for, to doing that work. It's not going to be done to them, that we're all working it through together because they know, they're the experts on what's going to be reasonable, and then establishing that backward map for a multi-year plan. So that's where we are with that. Next steps, we plan to hire that mathematics interventionist. There have to be those decisions that I was just outlining as possibilities around that supplemental seventh-grade mathematics, that in that enrichment opportunity for those other five groups of students. And January, we're anticipating an intervention resource pilot. So concurrently to all of this, we've been looking at intervention resources and also in the intervention resource pilot process, we're also looking at better data-keeping systems for our interventions themselves, so we can track, we can monitor, we can be very specific. So we're playing with some resources right now, and I've been able to work with some, some staff internally, both of our mathematics interventionists, administrators at the elementary school and the middle school, and they've also been talking to staff members around a resource pilot. We'll pilot some professional learning associated with those resources and the MTSS data management resource pilot, and then finalizing that advanced placement criteria. I know that was a big question that had been coming up, and we want to make sure we're really specific. So if we are saying that certain students are eligible for placement into Algebra I, what is that criteria? And making sure that that gets noticed out, and we're looking at refining what is, was currently in place. And then anticipated in February, really thinking through those middle school course offerings. This year, like I said, in seventh and eighth grade, there was an enrichment course, we're collecting data around that. We're, we're taking a look at the, how effective that is, to the extent that we want to do that again, what successes and challenges arose from doing that, how are we best using our FTE given the needs of our students and the data that we're seeing? And of course, we really have to, we want to make sure we're meeting the needs of all learners, but we absolutely have to nurture our most vulnerable learners, and they have to be the priority. They have to. We have to make sure that every child is, is reaching their fullest potential in terms of reaching those grade-level standards. So we'll, we'll continue to take a look at all of this, and we have lots of work to do. That's a very ambitious timeline. I'm, I'm putting it up there publicly, and I'm recognizing it's a very ambitious timeline and doing my very best to keep myself accountable to that timeline, also recognizing things are coming up and we have to be responsive. And somebody once said to me, you, you must disrupt a system at the rate it can absorb. And it's stuck in my brain, right? And also, we have urgent needs that are connected with student performance and proficiency, which is why we took more of an initiative approach rather than a slower inquiry process approach. And again, moving forward, I very much look forward to having an inquiry-based approach to the extent that when we're ready to start doing that, more and more. Any questions?
I know Catherine, you might have to run, so if you want to go first, if you have, if you have any questions.
I mean, I have an early morning flight at 5:00 AM and I stayed for this presentation. You did not disappoint, Melissa.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate the clarity of the presentation. I loved hearing from the teachers and hearing about the professional learning communities and the inquiry process. I really appreciate their time and energy. But I also do want to take a moment because over the past two years, we've talked a lot and pushed as a board to have conversations framed around data. And it's, I think it's particularly noteworthy how much you've taken our suggestions and thoughts to heart, all the wonderful work you've done in the district on your own and with your teachers and your colleagues. But to hear this conversation about looking at data and backward mapping and working with teachers to really create these deep learning communities about their work and the work that they're so proud of, and they're doing such good work around, these are really hopeful conversations. And it's really hopeful, I think, as board members and as parents, to think about just the way that students' needs will be met and the way this district will continue to move forward as a learning organization. And I'm, and I'm grateful for your work on this because I know this takes time, not only to lead, but also to explain to the community. And on that note, I've, I've loved Dr. Mercurcy, your emails to community post-board meetings, and I hope that some of this, or, sorry, Melissa. Those emails are wonderful, and I, and I hope the community can hear this because I know that not everyone listens, but I hope that they listen and they could hear many things tonight, including our tribute to Dr. Lang, who would appreciate all of this work. But our community to learn about this because you're really doing some excellent work and people need to know it. Thank you.
I know you're running. Let me, I just want to underscore, as you've already hit, that this is an impressive, we, we throw a lot of compliments around at this table, this one is truly deserved. Because we really are moving to get multiple times a year, looking at that in evidence. We now have the team to do that. I'm not stepping on the pass, I'm just looking forward, you've got the team to do it. So, and we had two teachers who clearly have rolled up, one longstanding, one newer to us, and Jennifer longstanding, obviously, Sarah. Both, that says a lot right there, their willingness to roll up. And what's really important to me is we've had the idea of inquiry, which is longer-term, multi-year, and quick on our feet, Melissa and others, this fall said, well, we better do something more immediate. And yes, I had a little energy behind that, but you all delivered, I was just the voice. And delivered on an immediate but with a structure, right? A lot of people would say, let's do something and not really have it be systematic. So we have the multi-year systematic, i.e. inquiry, we have the immediate, get something done as an initiative, but with structure and framework to it. So we're not just random. Because we heard the board, we heard parents, we continue to, that certainly around math, we've got to be organized in our approach, systematic in it, but, but we got to get moving. And I think that's what's here. And I, and I, so I thank you to Melissa, thank you to everyone else for, and Dan truly could not be here tonight, had a situation at home where he lives, or he would have been here, but, but he's been central to this. So anyway, I just wanted to, I know the board has questions, I just want to underscore that structure that's emerged.
And I really want to clearly thank our department chairs for their instructional leadership. I mean, without that partnership and without that leadership and our teachers who have been absolutely incredible partners, I sincerely mean that, it's been so joyful and it is the part of my work that I just love so much, being with teachers, being in classrooms. And there are so many complexities that happen during the day that, that in this role, you're navigating and juggling, we all are, and nobody owns busy. But our teachers are the people closest to the work, and our chairs are the closest instructional leaders to the work. And then behind the scenes, we're strong partners, and we're planning, and we're working together, and I couldn't be more grateful. So I really have to say that because it's made all the difference in the world.
Thank you, thank you. You know, I think from my vantage point as a parent and a trustee, I think it's very important, and this is not a question, but, you know, one of the challenges, I think, in mathematics, in the texture of things in districts, district, in a lot of districts, is what's unusual about mathematics is there are a lot of students who receive a lot of expectation and a lot of enrichment outside the home, which is very different from probably any other subject that, that the school teaches. And that's a real challenge as a, as a school, as a small school, and you, you mentioned acceleration, or we mentioned, we've talked about acceleration, we've talked about enrichment, which I see more as like a middle ground, and also, of course, we talked about MTSS. But I think for trustee's perspective, I don't want us to fall personally in the trap of judging the mathematics program by how well we accelerate or how, how well we meet the needs of people who have been accelerated and have all that additional support. Because there's a, there's a chance truly for a fundamental divide to develop where large cohorts sort of get left behind. And this hit home for me, you know, there's a, I think, probably a study that some of us have seen out of a state university system where the incoming freshmen, you know, it was something like a third of them had to have remedial math, not remedial, high-level high school math, but Math 8.
Yeah.
So arithmetic, basically. And I just think, you know, personally as a trustee, when we go into this work, something that I would like to have my eye on and the district have its eye on is how well we bring that whole, you know, cohort of children along, which you mentioned at the, at the close there, but it's really important that, it's, it's, it's a challenge, it's, it's not, not straightforward at all. So thank you.
I just, I want to thank you for, you and everyone who worked on the math initiative for the timeline that you proposed. I, I do agree, it's ambitious, but I'm so relieved that you don't want to wait till next year to start this. By next year, I mean September, that this is, this year. This is, this is, this is learning, enriched learning that will be provided this year for, for students. So thanks for jumping on that and really not waiting.
The proposal that is on the agenda outlines year one, year two, year three, and the work with Anshula Sobrin. with Anshula Sobrin, should the board approve it, which I hope you do.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess the, first off, thank you. You know, I think between both presentations, I think it's certainly showing a pattern, right, towards the future, which is exciting to see. So I guess like put into practice from the schedule we saw, it looks like at the end of the school year this year, I'm imagining the families are going to have a clearer idea of kind of what these options are for math, right, which directions. I'm curious what the rollout's going to look like and, you know, kind of how we're going to communicate this leading up to, you know, May and June, I guess, when these decisions will be made for the students.
So we're currently anticipating in terms of the pathways, we're questioning the enrichment, right? We have to take a look at the data and we have to take a look at how students are doing. And you mentioned the divide and we've got to figure that piece out about how do we best differentiate, right? And so that piece is still a question mark that we're trying to figure out. I will say, based on what I've outlined and based on the work that we're doing around different pilots, thinking about what is on the proposal for mathematics that you will see and the work that has to happen first, to build some professional relationships with the department, to actually take a look at the work and take a look at what's going on in terms of the, just the process of visioning, discussion, thinking about pathways, thinking about standards. There's an embedded coaching component where there's FaceTime with teachers, so there's differentiated personalized opportunities to support, to coach, to know, to help. But because we don't start the actual mapping process, because that has to come first, I anticipate that the pathway that we have now, which is having that Grade 8 and that Algebra 1, will remain the same for next year. And then the following year, after we've done the mapping process together, I think we will have some different options going on.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Question?
I just have one. Are you hoping that everyone will be on track to take Algebra in 8th grade?
I am hoping that everyone will be meeting their fullest potential with most students being able to access Algebra 1 in 8th grade. Historically, it's been half and half. And this year, it was four classes and two classes for Algebra. And that was a last-minute change and that came from me, frankly, like that we had to do it because the data was suggesting that we could create another section. So I will own that one. That was an 11th-hour decision and I want to thank the counselors for rescheduling many children. It affected broadly. I am anticipating, to the greatest extent possible, that we will provide a similar option, that it's less of the Math 8, more of the Algebra 1. But that said, when I presented the state of the district, this particular cohort performed weaker on the standardized measures than we've seen. And so I'm not sure yet. We have to follow them and we have to keep providing that targeted support.
Right. I'm not hoping, I'm not suggesting that having two Math 8s was the wrong decision. I think meeting children where they are is most important. And I do hope that, you know, there will be a Math 8 option still because I think of my child who, you know, would have struggled terribly, even though placed into Algebra. I was grateful that there was another option. So I do hope that there remains another option while the expectation and the hope and the work is still to push each child as much as possible.
That's right. And we're still considering that double-accelerated option.
Right.
Right? Because the seats that exist are the seats that exist. They can be occupied by 8th graders to the greatest extent possible. And also, we've had historically this group of accelerated, this double-accelerated 7th graders participating. And we want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful on those seats.
Right. Having options.
Yeah.
For everyone.
Right.
Can I also just piggyback on that idea? Because, you know, the other sort of endpoint, one endpoint for students is how far, how much advanced math can they do? How, what's the limit? But also, a very important endpoint that people have to consider, when you take an SAT or you take an ACT, you know, which is becoming, again, more standard, required, that's Algebra 1, Algebra 2, geometry. So if that, even if you go slower at the beginning, if you build a stronger base that gets you to even Algebra 2 as a senior, you've got, you know, you've got what you need to do well on those standardized tests, which are important, even without going super advanced.
I mean, one thing we're trying to build and is, what's the database? What's the evidence base longitudinally? So we can help families understand, really Alex's point, that not just here, but in this region anyway, and Professor here can say, "Well, it's a national thing." I bet their pockets all over the country, where there's too much push early to get into, say, that Algebra 1 and students aren't ready. You've heard me say, previous districts have been, have been lucky enough to have the longitudinal data to say to families, "Don't push it too early because you actually see fallout later," which can undermine. And we're trying to get there so we can help the family make that decision. And in those other locations, that data was actually helpful to most families. They went, "Oh, okay." And to Alex's great point, if you're saying, "Well, I got to do well in the SAT or the ACT," well, actually, this, the fundamentals matter in math. And it does start in the elementary, so we're working on that. So we're not there, but we now have the framework, we have the structure, we've got the team. And even with the retirement you're going to vote on tonight, we are going to make sure that that brilliance of Greg Stephens carries forward because he's been a uniquely gifted chair of the math department here. But we're going to carry that forward. Anyway.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry. You had mentioned Algebra for All and I'm sorry if I'm thick. I could just look it up on the internet, but is that something that pertains to this? What is that exactly?
Yes. So right now, we offer Algebra for some students in 8th grade. Right now, it's the majority of students of 8th grade. Previously, it's half. So the idea is to be able to offer it like we do with Earth Science in 8th grade, that all students are able to access that class. So we're thinking through how to best create pathways there. When I first got to this district, there, one of the first things I learned was about the summer packet, that people were, because it was not an articulated coherent program, that they're basically skipping a year and have to fill in the knowledge base over the summer around that content. So this backward mapping process is going to be essential to create the conditions where all students theoretically can take Algebra. And I heard what you said about having the Math 8 option. So we're working through those pathways. We are very confident that Anshula Sobrin is the right person to partner with us, as we were with Diane Cunningham being the right person around writing. These are really strong names in the field who have done exceptional work. So we're optimistic. But I hope that that answers your question, this idea that all students hopefully will be able to access that. We want to get as many students as possible in there.
No, thank you. That explains a lot.
When I came to the district in 2018, the first meeting I encountered was a whole meeting around math and around Algebra 1 for All and then the role of tutors in the high school and just a need for a direct focus on math. So I think this sort of, what was the term you used? Not the inquiry approach, the initiative approach where like they're diving into the data and they're seeing what's happening is such an exciting first step. And then for the Algebra 1 for All, what it all, like it rests on backward mapping the curriculum and integrating the data of the students to understand where they're at, to see where they could go. And it's just that's the work that needs to be done and to hear you speak of it clearly, more articulately than I am, is really, it's good to hear because I think it builds trust for families who've long sort of questioned if they could trust the process, to hear that it's really being looked at in a very, very serious way.
No, that makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, what you just said, right, understanding the information and the data so much and kind of build what you had mentioned around, you know, tailoring our approach and making sure that we're not, you know, rushing or, you know, understanding the differences in how our children learn. I'm imagining that understanding that is going to make it a lot easier to tailor those approaches to the kids. So I think those two things together really, hopefully, is helping, making everybody feel really great about where this is going. So just trying to articulate that.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Are you looking right now to make this like a, something that can be changed on a cohort-to-cohort basis? Or is that how it is right now? Because you spoke about like next year, like the next 8th graders, like they are underperforming on the exam. So is this something that maybe you go back to like three Algebra and three instead of like four and two? Or is it like?
It's a great question. So we're not intending to be, so we always want to use data to make those decisions about what teachers are teaching and the things that we're offering. But what we need to do is get a more coherent pathway so that we don't have to keep making those fluctuations, that we're making sure that we are centering the needs of the students, getting ahead of that, so that we don't have some of the gaps that we're seeing. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear. I'm not suggesting that individuals are not working to meet the needs of their students. Our teachers work tirelessly to meet the needs of their students. What we're seeing in the data is some of our students are not performing and it raises a question mark, right? Not performing to their fullest potential. So to go back to your question, we're hoping to have a really consistent arc and also with the reserve of the right to make shifts if we're seeing some anomalies in what students need.
Yeah. Thank you. Catherine, feel free, you got it early. Is your flight really at 5:00 AM?
No, I have to leave.
Okay, okay. And that's not, that's not great. That's not great either, but like...
Alex, if I might, just, we have monthly meetings with PTA Septa leadership and they, by good coincidence, are the Tuesday of a board meeting. They're very supportive of what is happening here and also, as we think about the variations that we've talked about, certainly in math and ELA, they're asking us to keep an eye on other areas, which I thought was a very helpful comment. How we get there, I'm not sure. We're a small district and all that. But I just wanted to flag for you as a board that we are listening to a set of parents in multiple ways. So you can move the agenda now, but I thought that is a comment right now.
No, for sure. Thank you. Catherine, safe travels. Moving on, thank you, students. Ella and Joaquin for being very patient this evening. Long run up. We're open for the student report. Who wants to go first?
I guess I can go first. So starting off, this is just a reminder that Hillside Picture Day makeup's are this Friday, so it's important to remember so they will be featured in the yearbook. Leading up to the 25th, which is the annual Share Thanksgiving Dinner, prep days will be hosted from Saturday to Monday in the middle and high school cafeteria. And so Saturday and Sunday, it starts at 11:00 PM and then Monday, it starts at 3:00 PM. And then permission slips to participate in the prep days and dinner are due this Friday and are available in the high school main office. This is also a side note, next Wednesday before Thanksgiving is a half day and we also have Thursday and Friday off for the holiday. So since we won't be seeing you all, I hope you guys have a happy Thanksgiving with your families. Something for the varsity baseball team is from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM tomorrow, Chipotle will be donating 25% of sales to the Hastings Varsity Baseball Team. So all orders will need to be ordered in person with a flyer shown or ordered for pickup on the app with the code. And then seniors are also able to request for their first quarter grades to be sent to colleges, specifically ones that we've already applied to. And this is accessible through a form on our grades classroom page. I'd also like to have a huge shout-out to the cast crew and all advisors involved with the CLUE production. It was truly an amazing performance and it filled me with so much joy and admiration for everyone involved. And everything just came together so phenomenally and you can really tell there's a lot of passion put into this, especially when the comedic parts left me laughing with all my friends hours after.
That's great. I remember seeing the movie. It was 1985. It's a good movie.
That play was really great. I just have to, I agree.
Thank you. Thanks, Ella.
Okay. So last Tuesday was JF Junior Formal. It was really an amazing night. There's a masquerade theme, lots of decorations. There's a smoke gun, laser soup dancer. Food was really amazing. I think people really enjoyed the photo, like the photo booth machine as well. I got pictures of my friends with Coach Callagie and all the guys on the soccer team. He was there chaperoning. AP Chemistry got one too. Mr. Cooding was more or less unfazed and we showed it to him in class. But it was a really great night for us. So we'd like to thank all students, parents and teachers involved in planning. And a big shout to Mr. Ruffler and Ms. Clawwell, our new junior class advisors. They've stepped up to that position and we really like to thank them and we're looking forward to working with them. Last Friday, we also met with affinity club leaders about actions that we can take together towards building a more culturally inclusive curriculum with classes that come from maybe different racial backgrounds or from sources that are less well-known. And we want to be super transparent about what's happening here because it's really important work and we want to make sure that expectations are on the same level. So what I mean by that is, right now, we're sensing some frustration coming from like these student leaders. They're really dedicated and they're grateful that they're heard and that they're, we are expecting a new course to be added, at least to the high school next year. But at the same time, they felt like they've had to lower their expectations just a little bit. Like in the beginning of the process, they were super ambitious. They were hoping to get a college course or an AP level course. And in their meetings with us and Dr. Mercurcy and faculty, it's just, it's becoming increasingly clear that's not, most likely not going to happen for a lot of good reasons. So there's teacher availability. We don't, we don't know if teachers have the time to build a new course, if they have the time in their schedules to teach a new course. There's teachers autonomy, which is a big priority. We spoke to Mr. Claman about this. When you have a college course or an AP curriculum that teachers have to adhere to, they don't really get as much independence as like what they want to teach. There's the aspect of time. It's going to be much easier to get a course in faster if we don't have to tie it in with a college curriculum. And also, when you put like an AP stamp or a college stamp onto a class, it can discourage a lot of people from wanting to take it, which is something that we really want to avoid because this class is something that's going to be teaching really important things and we want it to be accessible to everyone so that they're comfortable that they can succeed in learning about this. As a result though, the, we and affinity club leaders, we've been focusing a lot more on what we have, I would say, complete agency of, at least talking to Mr. Claman, which is the lessons that we're planning to implement in courses that we already have in the school. We're meeting this Friday with a student and a parent group. They're called Spice. They're dedicated to inclusive education and they want to help us in our work towards building a more culturally inclusive environment. And we have a goal by Super Intense Day to get like a video or workshop planned out by affinity club leaders. And we want to broaden perspectives for adults in the building about what it's like as a student of color in the high school and what challenges we face and what everyone can do so that we feel more part of the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Joaquin. I'll just note that I saw an email go out that we're getting, that we're getting, that the 5th grade musical is going to be Annie. So I just remember seeing that also, like 1980, a long time ago.
I just wanted to thank Joaquin and to bring this to us about your meetings with the students and the affinity club and their feelings about the process, which I understand. I could see that how there was a vision originally and then it had sort of changes and morphs over time. But I guess I ask that you please keep us updated on the progress of the course and also if there's any help you need with like the video, like the next steps for the group.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there specific, like, do you have a specific course that you want to be taught?
Well...
Or you, not just you, your group?
Well, I'm actually not in the affinity club, but yes, we are working with them. So they've sent out like a form type and they like, they have like Asian-American studies, African-American studies. We talked with student union leaders there. They suggested like an, almost like an independent study class where you research your own culture. So there's a lot, there's a lot going on there. We don't know, we're, I think we're planning to get like a form out to students who want and get a little more perspective from the student body about what they think would, like a type of course would be most interesting to them.
But students are asking that it's an AP course.
Yeah. So not all students, affinity club, they were the original ones pushing for this. They had wanted an AP course or a college-level course. But when speaking to us, I think, now I think the goal is to get like an honors-level course, like sort of a compromise between. But I think that's, most likely that's going to be the goal right now.
Okay.
And it would be for upperclassmen? Like is there a potential for something for freshmen?
Oh, I don't think you'd be limited. It could be an elective for all type of thing.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you.
I mean, I think it's been really, really helpful that Ellen and Joaquin, as board representatives for students, have stepped in to really help facilitate. And if it's not, it won't be at the AP level. I think that's coming clear. But I think they're helping a softer landing then for the advocates. But what you're doing here... But what you're doing here, we're getting some very important triangulation going on. We're seeing organized student voice as to something very meaningful. It started at the mic there a couple months ago, so to speak roughly. You have now helped. I'm helping, seeing that from the faculty side, Dr. Samansky is. We're talking with Mr. Kleiman. We're going to reenter that. But my point is, this isn't just one side or one avenue saying we want this. It's several coming together to say it's really important. So then we can work with the faculty to say, how can we be responsive to where you are, what our students need, and get something done here? So I think we'll get somewhere, but bringing new courses in at any point or additions to a course, it can be a challenge. And your leadership on this, both of you facilitating, has been really, really helpful.
Thank you.
You're genuinely acting as liaisons, which is sort of the job description, but you really are doing it. And like Dr. McCursie said, it, news delivered from you and explanations delivered from you, I'm sure land better than you. Just because...
24/7 for sure.
You know?
I didn't say 6/7. I said 24/7.
Okay, fine.
All right. And then there were six. Bye, Catherine. Moving on, thank you both. Moving on to Dr. McCursie's superintendent, a report update and district highlights.
Who's going to click away? I guess I click. It would seem that our student liaisons and the superintendent, and actually it's Melissa and Care who substantially organize what you see here. But again, that we want to try and put in the public record every meeting is narrative, visual about really good, good things going on in this district. And ever since I've been here, I've insisted on as much as I can going high, celebrating. I'm not Pollyannaish. I can be really critical, but I just believe communities, especially schools, are most healthy when they keep remembering what's good. And it's so easy to fall into the less than good. So here we are, literally our second graders digging into learning. The words there, the narrative are really important. This is nice in that it's a PTSA grant. We were talking today in our monthly meeting with the PTSA Septa about other ways to get help, and they're so quick to say, how can we help? And this is a nice example. And many of you probably know Lee Groden, this is the garden that is helping with. But it's again, another example of families coming together within the school. And these second graders will someday, because 95% of them are, be juniors, seniors. So this is really planting, ready for the pun, planting roots for future growth. Then coming up into sixth grade, the use of really a mixed blended learning here, the idea of digital devices being of use while sorting through literature work. And I don't know how this fits with what we just learned about from the ELA inquiry. And Melissa, I don't know if this quite fits, but I think this is a nice mix that we're not just putting students in front of devices, but they're used for a good function. And notice the old fashioned paper up to the right. And this is really breaking apart learnings, literature and stories, really thinking and being critical and creative. This is again, a look in. The review, why we call it a look in, is an example, a quick glimpse of things that are happening. Now, for the high school, this isn't the classroom, but this is CLUE, which was just spoken through so well by Ella, Melissa, myself, Andy Kleiman, and a number of others, joined by a lot of faculty who were there Friday night. We attempted to grab this thing, which the directors and others were talking about at the bottom, called doreography. Melissa D. and I were trying to figure out how to spell that, but if you saw the production, you know what I'm getting at. I think Ella, you saw it. What do you think we're talking about with doreography here? Putting you on the spot. Cold call. I love it.
I would say that you're probably talking about all the different ways that they use doors to portray the scene and the emotions.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, that's what it is.
Choreographed door twirls.
And every play I see in Hastings, I'm blown away by the comedic abilities of certain, if not all, but certainly one of the closing scenes, a certain character, actor, student, and if I mention a name, everybody gets upset. So it was brilliant. The whole production was. And the one fun thing about the doors is you had a sense of the tech team being very active and present. It was a full-on production.
You should give a shout out to Rachel Weinberg.
Yes, and the write-up does do that. And actually, I think to your point, Jody, what we liked in this write-up is Liam Sexton as a student himself said, this is what matters. So we, because I always do want to feature Rachel. We actually share Chicago, we realized. But more importantly was Liam, you know, featuring, which I thought was great to have a student speak about it. Which, where do I point here? Some images from the players may not quite show up here, but you can see them online. They're very clear online. A little more sense of the production. And then we're going into the 36th year of Project SHARE. As many of you know, if you go online to study, it's called SHARE the Project, but I've just only known it as Project SHARE. So that's what the write-up is here. Jody, you might want to touch base on this if you'd like. It's an incredible gathering of several hundred individuals, families, children, grandparents who come in from greater New York City, homeless, come for a full banquet. Many of you know this. Board, you're more than welcome to come and be around the edges if you have not witnessed it. It's this next Tuesday evening. Cochran Gym has transformed into a banquet space. It's really remarkable. And the students guided, make all the food, do all the serving, help, you know, be the host. And it's really a, really a paying it forward and really speaks to the heart of Hastings. I don't know, Jody, if you want to add, is the veteran here?
Something that Jeannie Newman started, obviously, 36 years ago. And it's kind of a very, it's sort of a hallmark Hastings thing to do. And I think it's great for everyone who's involved. I think it's a great experience for students. I think they really take it to heart and really remember it. It's something to take with them and maybe even pay it forward someday.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just sad that, you know, we talk about our schools being, you know, more than just for kids, but being a pillar of this village, and I think there's no better example. I totally agree. Then Thanksgiving, Project Shared, everything that Jeannie does, it's pretty amazing.
Speaking of talent, Talent Show coming up. I don't know if Ella or Joaquin, you're going to be up there at all in any way? No? Okay, you reserve your talent for your board role. So there it is. And then coming up is the Hastings High School Scholarship Night, so people can kind of understand what's out there to be of help. And then lastly, we always do upcoming events, so you have a sense of what's upcoming. So there we are.
Thank you, Dr. McCursie. Thank you. Moving on to Dr. Samansky with updates from...
We're going to go, I think, Maureen first? Were you going to go first?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip it? I really do need reading glasses. I'm like, it's very, it's very bad. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Maureen. I'm going to skip you. So these are going to be construction update to financial highlights.
Yeah. This is on, okay. So yeah, there's another, about four items I just want to go over quickly. First, I will start with the Hillside Cafeteria program, and this is something I just want to flag for the board to kind of give you an update on how it's going. So as you know, this year, we did make a change to our Hillside Cafeteria program, and it was based upon the change from New York State in which Governor Hochul, under her plan, allowed schools that were participating in the federal school lunch program for all the students in that particular school then to receive free lunch. So with the time that was available, we were able to quickly go through a process which required applications and then rebidding our lunch program to allow Hillside to participate in that program. So really, from the beginning, and we've been in the program before and years ago, and we did get out of it at one point. And what is currently occurring at Hillside, and this is really since the onset of the program, we've been receiving many complaints and concerns from the, pretty much on the onset. And it continues, and it's something that has not really like slowed down since the beginning of the program. And so basically, we received significant negative feedback from parents, students and staff regarding the food options. The concerns focus primarily on the food quality and on the students' overall dissatisfaction with many of the items served. And this is somewhat consistent to what we experienced before when we were in the program and similar to what other schools, to be honest with you, and even, even schools have always been in the program, they see a low participation number and even with the meals being free, quite frankly. And I'm not saying all districts, but just anecdotally from people I speak to. And interestingly enough, last year, we had no complaints, and all we received actually was compliments, and people were very, very happy. And we were even up to like an 80 or 90%. This is in our old program, participation, which is pretty amazing to even see that level of people buying, you know, lunch. That's pretty remarkable. But again, I just want to flag this because I continue to kind of get feedback. And then recently, I'm, actually, recently I've been asked now to not only, I've received the feedback from students themselves, I am to meet with a group of students who have organized themselves at the fourth grade to request a change. While we understand the concerns, you know, just also to speak to the actual meals themselves, there's no issue with the meals. They are really following the required menus. And although there's a little bit of variety, you can pick different selections, and they've been moving through, there may be one or two that people seem okay with, but the majority of the offerings are not, you know, well-received. And our consultants that we work with are twofolds. We need to have a compliance audit. We have audits when you're given, when you participate in the federal program, there's audits that go on each year. The state comes in and looks at the program. But then in addition, we have a group that helps us to kind of like pop in and see like how things are going, to make sure like we have a good sense of like, especially when we're getting negative comments, I want to see like what is happening up there? What is your take on the food? So they're like, the food looks, the presentation is fine, looks good. It's meeting all the components. It's clean. It's exactly the menu. It meets all the portions and all the rest. So in other words, it's not so much with the food service company, it's really the menu they're adhering to. And again, just our students are not happy with it, nor are the parents. I mean, I didn't put that in here, but actually even in my office, we get even comments such as this is almost worse than prison, I mean, from parents. So and it's actually been something that I've just, I don't know if you've heard of it, but there's been a lot of issues around it. So anyway, that being said, we're meeting with the group on Friday, and you know, we'll see what comes of that. But to help guide our decisions moving forward, I'm considering putting out a survey for all the parents, students at Hillside, because honestly, you know, again, I get a lot of complaints. That doesn't mean it's 600 families. It means that we've received a lot of complaints. And also the staff, very early on, grade level, teachers have gotten together, written emails, very detailed emails of what they seen. And what they're reporting, though, is the students, even when they're encouraged to eat, they're throwing the food away, and the kids are coming back hungry, which now is, you know, that has been something from both the parents and the teachers. And again, it hasn't, you know, we waited some time, and we've given all the feedback to the company. And, you know, this is continuously is the same issue over and over. So again, we're going to take this year to see, and then we'll come back with a recommendation, you know, if we continue. But again, you know, it is free, so that's a piece of it. But I just want to flag this for you.
Can I, I think it's really actually a very important point you're making, and frankly, a fairly large issue in that, you know, because it has to comply with federal standards, one of the issues has been that there's foods that are required to be put on the plate, to be made available.
Yes.
So there's a tremendous amount of waste because you have to have X, Y, and Z when you serve a tray. It's not à la carte, so tons of stuff gets thrown out.
You have to take it or else it's suffering.
Right. And so the waste is one issue, and then the other is that basically everything becomes individually wrapped in plastic, and it's just reheated, and the quality is really low. So this is something that, you know, I mean, to the point that fourth graders are organizing, right?
That's true.
I think this is, and the other point you raised, which is really, really true, that students are refusing to eat.
Yes.
They'll take it, throw it out, and then come back to the classroom starving. And that's a real, so I really appreciate that you're looking at it, and I think trustees, you know, we have to be thoughtful about supporting the administration and finding a solution because it's a real, it's a real issue. So thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no. And again, it was something, I think, in the, you know, initial changeover, you want to wait, give it some time and see if there's, within the different menu options that comply, you know, what can be, you know, maybe there are some things that start to stick, and like, okay, maybe if we stick with these four or five different things that are, seem to be more popular. I think they're probably, you know, I've heard different feedback, there's maybe one, you know, a meal or two, like I think the mac and cheese for supper, you know, is more popular, and people seem to like it. What I always noticed, this is my own observation, when we participated before, the food offerings, in my opinion, are less healthy. And that is not, I mean, that's what I've observed, and that's actually what's being reported. Because even like Fruit Cup, you know, although I like it, like the canned Fruit Cup that I do find tasty, fruit cocktail personally, you know, it's not good for you. That can, that's kind of considered a fruit where, interestingly, if you're out of the program, the offerings are much higher quality. I think part of it is, you know, food service companies are in it to make money, right? They're not in it to lose money. They're billion-dollar companies that do this work. And, you know, the amount that they receive back in federal reimbursement is, you know, they have to make it all work. And all that to be said, like, obviously, that has some also impact on potentially what they're able to buy. You know, we don't, we receive very little, you know, you get some commodities, not much. But even with that, and some commodities are quite good, but just the way it rolls out and speaking to colleagues, I mean, this is not unusual.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, maybe some, again, I think there's some things that are good, so I don't want to make it all negative. And I think, and I'm sure, that's why I think the survey is important, because as we know, like I don't want to make a decision based upon, although I think I've heard it quite, you know, that's also not the entire school. And we want to make sure, because if we drop out of it, of course, people go back to paying. And, you know, we're sensitive to that as well. But I just also, put in here, just want to reassure you in terms of the process we do or had prior that we still have at the middle school, high school, which is not in the program, is that we have always, although we didn't participate, we did provide free lunches to anyone who asked, and we weren't doing, you know. And in addition to the people who don't fit the criteria, we've always had a process, and I really compliment our staff and our guidance counselors, that if there was a concern around a family that even they think is, you know, they don't have enough food or, you know, even if they don't fit the criteria, we've put them on administrative free lunch. So meaning, you know, because the free and reduced criteria to, it's almost impossible to make that. So I think we did have a relatively, you know, good system in place that continues at the middle school and high school. And again, we, because we had our own program, we are allowed to put people on administrative based upon, beyond the qualifying. So anyway, just want to subdue you because I know it's important, and now we'll be putting out a survey most likely to gauge it.
It is, it's super important and super disheartening to hear that, you know, money is such a big deal for the, money and reimbursements are dictating how healthy the food is. You know, it's...
Yeah. And the federal criteria, I mean, some of it is not to say, you know, with kids, and I know whole grain, but you know, can't have like, say, macaroni, like that is, it has to be like a whole grain. It's different. I mean, there's certain things that are that, and there are definitely, there is money. I mean, I think at the end of the day, it is, there is a large money component where maybe if the reimbursement, which is quite low, quite, so it's free, but it's like they're getting like $2 or $3 per meal.
Right.
With labor costs included. You know, although they don't have overhead of needing to rent a space, we all know. But it also has to include like milk and fruit and different grain.
But it is, it's optional to be part of this federal program where...
Yes, so, yeah, so it's optional, but what occurred this year is Governor Hochul, in her budget, allotted money that as long as you participate in the federal government, even if you have 1% eligibility, for everyone gets free lunch now. So a lot of districts who are out of it, similar to Hastings, we only have 4%, I think, or maybe, you know, I'll even say up to six or seven that are eligible, but typically but typically it's even something sub four or were actually eligible under the federal guidelines. So because of that, a lot of times we couldn't even get companies to work with us and that's for another reason because we didn't have enough eligibility to make it worthwhile for them. But in addition to it, when we did participate, we, we did have, we actually had such a low participation of people buying lunch because it kind of, they, people didn't, they just didn't want it. So it's optional that we did it because I think, think we wanted to be, we had hoped it would be better and we had hoped, you know, to give people the option of free food. I mean, that's a lot of money that, you know, whether, whatever your economic status is, if you have a few children and you're saving $4 a day per child on lunch, it's, you know, considerable amount of money. And, and I will say that I just, you know, wanted to reassure you, I mean, the food service company is not, from the beginning, I'm reporting, this is a constant conversation, Amy's been extremely involved, I've been extremely involved and I speak, you know, we've, early on, everyone has my contact information and, and others and, you know, we've been hearing from people very early on. So it was, we participated because we had hoped that even if it was not as much to the liking of students as it was last year, there would still be, you know, a lunch that would, that they would still enjoy and it would be free and all the rest and that was something we felt we needed to give it a try and not just say, no, you know, just because my past experience, anecdotally wasn't, they didn't like it as much, doesn't mean we, you know, being it was now free for all, it's difficult not to participate in that. But, but that's why I think, you know, and then the decision to either stay or, you know, leave it, I think we have to make thoughtfully because there may be people that kids do like the lunch, now it's free, you know, it's not everyone is throwing out their lunch either, so I think it's, we really just need to have all the information. But I didn't, I wanted you to understand what was going on, I mean, if we put a survey out.
That's a big point.
Why we're doing it. So it's, I don't think it's something, you know, right now I would recommend to drop out of either based upon this, I think we need to have all the information and make an informed decision and then also to see if we stayed into free, could we do an à la carte separate that kids could buy?
Yeah.
And do something different and expand the program, which with younger kids is a little more difficult because usually you just want to have one or two offerings because even getting all the components on the tray has, has now made kids not have enough time to eat, it's been a problem, they run late because it's, it's like, it's easier to have kind of one or something simple that they like and it just moves them through. So there are other, I mean, à la cartes at elementarys aren't, you know, optional.
Sounds like there really is no free lunch.
No, no.
That's the expression, right?
Yes.
Truly not.
That's a good point.
But what, what feedback can we give the state on this? Because it was sort of sold as this wonderful free lunch for everybody, but it sounds like it's a big waste for everybody.
I mean, the one thing for me, and this is, this is with anything with the state, what I wish they would do is for the, God knows how many million, hundreds of millions of dollars this is costing, can you just give it to the schools that can properly administer it? Or can you just give us money to lower the overall cost of lunch?
Yeah.
For all.
Subsidize a little bit and that's enough.
You know what I mean? Like I wish it was more that because I think all children would benefit from it and I actually even would go further to say that the schools that really need it, need more money and not all the schools, you know, need it equally.
Have to have all.
That's all, I mean, that's just something that I don't, but I know it's hard, the state can't, you know, it's, they have to, it's hard to do that, but.
They could.
That's, you know, it hasn't been working as well as we hoped, that's what I'll review with.
Thank you, Maureen, so you're going to do a survey?
I am.
And then sort of come back and decide where?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we're in it for the remainder of the school year, but I just think it's good for us to understand and report out, well, for two reasons, A, we want to know what's happening at Hillside and B, had it been going extremely well, I would have maybe recommended to move the program to the middle school and high school, like to participate as well, like had it been, you know, wildly successful here, or just successful rather. Okay, so the next one I want to update the board on is retention ponds, it's connected and we'll speak more to it when we get to the facilities committee minutes later in the agenda, but I just wanted to tell you what has happened. Since the facilities meeting and it's to do with the retention ponds at the wetlands on the Lower Burke Estate, so that, we'll go and get into the discussion of what happened at the facilities meeting, but since then, we've been back out on the site. The architects again did another visual inspection of the, the ponds down below. Some of what was noticed visually and, and we did speak about it a bit in the facilities committees, there's just a lot of leaves and basically the leaves then don't allow the water to flow correctly and all the rest. So some of it, we just talked about basic maintenance, so I just want to report out that since that meeting, we have begun to do some more, put that in our grounds crew for now, we're, you know, we'll see long term if we think we need some additional help in terms of maintenance around the property. And again, you know, they're more than willing to do it, it's just something that, just with the leaves, they were getting caught up, which was then causing some of the overflow and led to some of the erosion around the area. We're also, our architects and engineers, they're saying, you know, right now and not being the facilities reported, it is outside the catchment area of the work that they're doing and like, let's just think about it, forget about the work we're doing above, but looking at what currently is the conditions down there, we are going to have another engineer that we've worked with before there, who has worked with our stormwater management plan prior to taking on this new work and we're going to likely get a proposal from the professional proposal to advise us of what things can be done to, in the current state, to improve, to improve the condition of those. Although they're working and with the correct maintenance, we think it'll be fine, but we want, we need to have that more than a visual inspection, a little bit more work done to provide you a better update. But, you know, right now, they're not, I think with the normal maintenance, this is a more or less probably a newer condition, that, that's what I will say, because we did work on there about last year, I don't want to, you know, go into a full blown, you know, what we've done, but we had done work there just last year when there was a condition that was reported to us and we spent about $400,000 on improvements to drainage and bringing, because of erosion. So my guess is being that there was work down, done down there within the last 12 or maybe it was 18 months, 18 months ago, some of this condition could be relatively new, right? Things, you know, one day could be fine and then we may just have had more erosion. So I say that because it could be a really bad rainstorm that there was a lot of leaves in there and that could have caused additional. So we have always maintained the site, we, again, last year when things were brought to our attention, we immediately had somebody come in, we did, we authorized, water authorized an emergency repair to the site, which was based upon like some weather, you know, patterns that, you know, had caused some additional erosion. So again, we'll be back to with a proposal likely to do a little bit more investigation because it will require more than a visual, maybe investigating the stormwater plan and all the rest.
Maureen, who owns that?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. And there were some things that again, I think we might touch upon it later in the facilities committee report, just in terms of like the DEC and there are some newer requirements around that and that's why we just have to be cautious in how we approach anything, even if it's a minor repair we do, we do have to coordinate that with the DEC. So it's, if it was something that we could just kind of address right away, we, we have some ideas around what would work and some of it's even just fencing and putting some things over there to protect things from clogging up the drains, really relatively, it's seemingly simple things we could do to improve the conditions, but we just want to make sure we're approaching it properly. So, and yes, we do own the property.
Maureen, with the ownership, is the school property or the Burke Estate go all the way to Broadway?
Yes.
So the wetlands that we have volunteers from the village that are doing work in there, is there some kind of agreement or contract we have with them regarding legal issues?
Yes, so that was the, I will say to you since I've come here.
There's a lot of concern because I didn't think, I thought that maybe that was parkland or something, but.
Right.
Now it's all, it's all school property and it's great that where the school is invested in preserving the wetlands in the area, but.
They have to be.
Yeah.
There's a lot of law around it.
Yeah. Okay.
Actually, one of the complicating factors, you know, right now that is not, even though it's wet land, it's not officially recognized, or previously till right now, it was not officially recognized.
It wasn't, it's just recently now, yes.
So people could come in there.
Yes.
You know, ad libitum, so to speak. Now that it has, you know, New York State's changed its purview, extended it, now it is under state control and that's an unknown issue, but now we have to control access to it because now it's, now it is a wetland, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's additional complication.
Yes, so, and so that, that's why I think it's like a to be continued because based upon the last meeting and as Alex just explained, now it has more of a, it didn't, I mean, we may have called it that, but didn't have an official designation as a wetland.
Right.
So now with that occurring, we will revisit it and then if, if, if it's still allowed to have individuals work, you know, with the school, with, you know, a partnership with the village, we may have to formalize that a bit more. I will say that that, that is, as long as I can remember, there's been a group of folks that have done work down there as well as like even the Hillside Woods, like taking vines off, there's kind of been this.
Yeah.
Which also is owned by the village or in some ways by some of it, by the school district right behind it. So, so some of it, I think we do have to formalize is the answer to your question, I think as, but I think it is, as Alex said, I think more so now because of now this new designation, that it is officially coordinated with the DEC where previously we were not, we did not have to do that.
Does that come with more restrictions in terms of the retention?
Yeah, like, likely, possibly, so that's why we really need someone. And, and in our current engagement, that'd be a separate engagement with LA group possibly, but we're also, Joe and I are meeting with another group we've worked with previously who's done a lot of extensive work at Burke Estate, who are also landscape architects and engineers and actually are, you know, we have to, it's a separate engagement we have to do with somebody anyway to do this evaluation. So we'd be paying one or the other and Joe and I were kind of leaning toward maybe even working with someone else we worked with previously on that site, who's, this is something that's in their wheelhouse, you know, where I think Bob can do it, but he's more of a field designer and he has the expertise to do it, some of these other folks, they have, they do some of this other type of drainage and they do sports, I feel like they have more of an expertise in this area, so to be continued there. We did have our Faragut Wing construction meeting today, as we do every week. Overall work at the Faragut Wing continues to progress according to schedule during this morning's fire inspection. A couple doors located on the, outside the flood radius who are identified as not being fire rated to ensure full compliance will need to be addressed through a change order. I mention this because you will now, we gave you an amount of about $1.2 million, the delta for us, there will be some changes, both credits and additions, that are really beyond that, just as things come up in the field that are like, as I explained, as they were kind of up in the ceiling outside where the water actually came down, the fire inspector was there like, are these doors fire rated? And so it's not necessarily connected to the flood, but it's connected to it because now we need a new CFO to reoccupy that space. So the, anything that they come across that's in any way related, but it was above where the flood started, so obviously the company that's here, we're going to have them do the work, right? So that will add to their contract, but it's really, and I'll, when you see those type of change orders, I'll delineate, is this part of the flood radi, was it within the area in which it was flooded or is it just, you know, a part of like a stairwell that maybe did not receive water? So, but I say that just so you know, when there's sometimes change orders coming in front of you, that it's related to this work and until we get full completion. Not to scare you, it's probably not a significant dollar amount, meaning not sub $10,000, but it will be probably next week. Again, fire suppression system, we're so happy, it's almost near complete and that was one of the largest components of the project and that is in its final stages. And then this week, we are meeting with the middle school grade level leaders to review timeline and discuss planning for transition back into the space. In addition, we've been meeting even since for the last month or so with individual teachers and departments to keep them informed and continue to develop logistics plan for reentry. We're also exploring the possibility of providing a dedicated day for teachers to get organized in their classrooms prior to welcoming students back into the renovated wing and we'll continue to keep the board updated as the work progresses. One thing I did not mention last week, that's not in my report, we're bringing back the composting program, I think effective December 1st, I think I said it on my way out last time, I, I don't know, where I said it to myself, I, I, we, I did hire, we were able to hire a person into that role, I just have to coordinate with our external partners who have really helped with that effort and I'm hoping to try to do some of the training next week. I mean, the person has worked in composting, so they just want to know how we do it here. And so we.
At what school?
Here, Hillside.
Hillside.
Yeah, so we hired a dedicated person.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and the, the, the external partners are aware of this because I had let them know when we found someone and now I just need to coordinate with them this week and say, you know, is anybody available next week to kind of, I'm going to meet with the person that was hired and then with the kickoff being December 1. And the other piece is I needed to have the pickup, the compost pickup rescheduled because that of course wasn't happening if we weren't composting, we didn't have that pickup, so. We just needed to get those two lined up.
Who picks it up, the town?
No, our, our.
Hudson Compost?
It's not Hudson Compost either and it's like, it's who does our, our containers and things, we haven't, I mean, our regular garbage is picked up, we had asked.
Okay.
Last year, they were unable to do it, so we have a private service, so.
Oh, great.
But they come, we probably just, we're just going to have them come like once a week, we would just store it in a secure container for them to come get it, it shouldn't be a problem. So yeah, that's December 1. Do you mind if I just say something about Damaris? I'm sorry, is that, could I just say something about Damaris?
No, go ahead.
I just, I didn't want to, I wanted to say, I just had, so, okay. Now I'm going to, because now I can't, I'll start crying. I just wanted to honor a couple of things to Dr. Lang, a woman whose sudden passing has left an ache in our community and in the hearts of all who knew her. I actually met Damaris years before her time as a board member when we volunteered together for Relay for Life, probably about 10 years ago. I can still see it clearly, at the very start of the work, Damaris just began to sing a song, it wasn't planned, it wasn't rehearsed, it just rose out of her, filled with the emotion and love for every person we were honoring that day, whether they were lost or still fighting cancer. Looking back now, it was so perfect, perfectly her, genuine, heartfelt and deeply connected to the moment. It was beautiful and fitting in only a way Damaris could create. Knowing her truly changed my life. Like so many have said tonight, she had a remarkable way of standing firm in her beliefs, debating with passion and clarity and conviction, yet no matter how spirited the conversation became, she always was the first to wrap you in the warmest hug, a hug I could feel all the way down to my core. I held a deep respect for Damaris, not only as a leader and, and a school board member, but as a woman of unwavering faith. Her kindness was genuine, her love for people undeniable, and her presence carried a light that you could both see and feel. She lived with purpose, spoke with heart and cared with sincerity that touched everyone around her. Dr. Lang's legacy is so much bigger than just her role in this community or her title or what she's accomplished, it lives in the life of students she fought for, colleagues she lifted up and countless lives she influenced by just being exactly who she was. I'm deeply grateful to have known her and I will forever carry with me the wisdom, strength and compassion she so freely shared. May we honor her memory by loving boldly, standing firm in our values and embracing others with the same worth she gave so effortlessly.
Thank you, that was very kind.
Beautiful.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Sorry. Moving on to Dr. Zuzmansky with a.
Can I just, can I just ask one follow-up? And I'm so sorry, that was, that was wonderful, but just a business related question, are we, we're still looking good for January 16th FMS building, is that still?
Yes.
Okay, amazing.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to share a few comments tonight about the technology committee, the Dignity Act Parent Information Forum and the portrait of a graduate. And so I will jump around a little bit and I would like to start with the Dignity Act Parent Information Forum. So in partnership with the inclusion working group of the PTSA, the district and building level DASSA coordinators, so it was myself and the assistant principals, hosted a family information session on the Dignity for All Students Act, also known as DASSA. We are referring to it again as the Dignity Act because that's fundamentally what it is really about for our students. The presentation outlined what the Dignity Act is, the broader discipline framework under which it falls, which is our code of conduct, we talked a bit about VADER, key definitions associated with the Dignity Act, types of incidents handled under the Dignity Act, the reporting and investigation process and some recent improvements that we've made to data and communication protocols that have been in place, so much of which the board has already been updated on. And then we've also added a communications form, so we close the loop and people know that although we cannot disclose what's happened in terms of consequences for students, families will now receive a letter that the investigation has been concluded and a bit more information, founded, unfounded, code of conduct violation. And again, I can't speak to the consequences, but it will help with this idea that it's a vortex once the investigation begins, so there will be closure that's provided to families at the end. The presentation slide deck has been linked within the board agenda for your review. And the reason I front loaded that is I also want to take the moment to recognize and thank Dr. Lang for her leadership in this district, for her humanity. She was present at the Dignity Act Parent Information Forum as Bill referenced earlier. She was present at the Dignity Act Parent Information Forum, as Bill referenced earlier. And I have to say, I think it was, we had one of the last conversations that she's had, and we were talking together, and she approached at the end of the presentation, and I think you were standing there, we were about to transition to the policy committee meeting.
I pulled you away, I felt so terrible. I pulled you away--
No, we finished.
To go to the meeting.
And we finished the conversation, and it was, as I reflect back, it was quite beautiful. And so, I will share the story. She approached and she was asking about the investigation process, and thinking about the extent to which there should be an impartial person who's not an administrator, not the DASSA coordinator, but somebody, for example, the guidance counselor or the social worker who's present for the investigation. And we did finish that conversation, we were talking about how, for a child, being able to think about actually sitting through the questioning and the investigation can be hard, and can be construed as almost a consequence in and of itself in some way, shape, or form. And so what we were talking about is, we have made in the past a deliberate decision to not include the counselors or the social workers, because they're on the restorative end. But I leave that conversation really thinking about the commitment to making sure that in that investigation process, that we are leaving no stone unturned around, making sure that we are taking an equity lens, that we are being as impartial to the greatest extent practicable, that we are recognizing that we may have blind spots as investigations are being conducted. And while we always do things with full fidelity, Dr. Lang's perspective that she shared around, always making sure that we're doing it that much better. And where might there be an opportunity for an improvement, so we can best serve all children? So, aside from her warm, vibrant personality, my memory of her starting Juneteenth in the village, and really getting Peacock up and running, and being a fierce advocate, and coming to us with concerns, and making sure that there was a need to not only leave no stone unturned, but also to go down any holes that we found underneath those stones. And I just want to recognize and thank all of her contributions to the district, to our village, and to the world. Okay, so transitioning to Portrait of a Graduate. So as part of the New York State Inspires Plan, the Board of Regents officially adopted the New York State Portrait of a Graduate, and districts have been asked to raise awareness of the new framework, which was finalized at the end of July. And the state Portrait of a Graduate emphasizes both academic excellence and the competencies necessary for college, for careers, for engagement in a dynamic world. So we are actually very well-positioned for this, given the state shift, because we've already got our Portrait of a Hastings learner. So we'll need to be doing some alignment with our portrait to the state's portrait, but having looked carefully at it, we're not far off. There are some pieces of language and thinking about what sits under what in the state portrait. So we've done quite well as a district, so thanks to all of the people involved in that creation. And then more immediately and tactically, we need to plan for implementation of financial literacy instruction, and the state will be requiring that next year in the middle school and the high school. And then the following year, they will be requiring it in the elementary school. So we have to work through that, and that does have some budgetary implications and/or implications for things that teachers are teaching now. So we have to think about that, because that is definitely coming down the pike. There will be more guidance provided, and we are beginning to talk about that regionally at our curriculum councils. And then finally, last but not least, Technology Committee met last week, and we convened to continue work underway to develop goals related to technology protocols and the use of instructional technology. And during the recent work session, what we did was, we continued analysis of responses to the parent survey that was sent at the end of the last school year. We weren't thrilled with the response rate, so we subsequently sent it out again this fall, and then we saw a nice increase, so the increase ticked there. We had 273 responses, and so if you think about that, you're getting the people with the strongest feelings typically. So that was really helpful, to be able to think about some patterns and trends. Our partner, Leslie Accardo, from the Regional Information Center, the RIC, was there with us, has been part of the committee, she brings a wide range of expertise, and she helped us in terms of how we analyzed all of those open-ended qualitative comments. And so she brought in Google Gemini, and helped to cull everything, recognize patterns and themes, and then we began the process of crafting multi-year goals. So we're not there yet, we just started just brainstorming based on what we're seeing. We should be able to finalize them at the next Technology Committee on January 12th. The goals will then be submitted to the state as part of the required technology plan. I suspect there will be something in there related to AI, that is our world, and that came through. I believe there will likely be something in there related to use of technology for instruction, and how we leverage technology in the most purposeful, necessary ways. I suspect these are goals that we'll be brewing. So we started drafting some thoughts, and again, hoping to finish that in July.
Thank you, Dr. Zuzamansky, thank you. Moving on to public comment, there's Denise, so we're going to move on to business items. Are there any questions or comments regarding business items 1 through 13?
I had a quick one about the executive functioning. Could you just give a little background on that? So that's a training--
Yes.
But a little background would be helpful.
Happy to. So, the executive functioning class, I'm going to back up all the way to budget season, where Scott Winn had recommended that addition to the schedule, that there would be the executive functioning class. So now I'll fast-forward a little bit. So that position was posted, and during the hiring season, it was very difficult to procure the right person for that position. It was reposted multiple times, and finally, we had a hire for that position, and that happened the day before school started. Like, it was right then and there. So arguably, we should have had a curricular resource in place already, and typically what we do is, we do that with the person who will be teaching the course. So either they design it, or we select it, and that got delayed. Having spoken with the teacher, they did have some materials in place, having looked through the materials and actually observed the materials and facilitation in the class, feel very strongly that's something that's more coherent, more, there was a research study involved in this particular resource. She's teaching multiple grade levels, so how do we make sure that we have, you know, something that's articulated, that makes sense? And for the price point, it's really quite good. So that's how that came to be. And again, arguably, it should have been in place before that class started. So there's been work happening. We believe that that can be strengthened based on having a nice resource in hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen, thank you. I just want to acknowledge, sort of theme a little bit tonight, of the sort of Hastings Extended Family. This Donald S. Bean, this establishment of a scholarship--
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little sniffling.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I vacuumed my house today, and I'm like--
Oh.
I don't know. I want to acknowledge the establishment, business item number 11, is the establishment of a scholarship by Donald S. Bean. I don't know any backstory at all, but I noticed a letterhead came from Kentucky, I believe. So I just want to acknowledge the establishment of that, and thank whomever it is. Any other questions or comments regarding--
I had a question about that, actually, maybe Maureen knows. Is that a scholarship-- that the interest from that money is what provides the scholarship every year?
No, that, we had one like that years ago. This was actually, they provided us a check of $25,000 to set up a recurring scholarship each year for a graduating senior. I mean, it will earn some interest, this is, years ago, there was one, it's $2,500 each year, so--
10 years.
For 10 years, yeah.
Okay.
I have one, can we just go back to the executive functioning class for one sec?
Sure.
So I, obviously, we want to purchase a resource, a curriculum, right? Basically, that the person who was hired can teach, which is, and I understand the timing, the issues. It is unfortunate that it's end of November, because that means that kids have been sitting in these classes with subpar curriculum, right? Or like--
They've had--
Something you're not happy with.
No, they've had, I just, I, they have had something. And the thing that has, that I've seen in action, right? So, thinking of Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, what is urgent, what is important, what is not urgent, not important. So the idea is to strengthen it to be even more coherent, so that the lessons are feeding into each other in a stronger way. So it's not that there hasn't been something for that class, it's just, again, it's, the theme of the evening is, how do we even do better? And being able to see that there are other opportunities, and also thinking about, you know, what we do is, in systems, is sometimes imperfect, and so you have something happen at a building level, or you have something at a district level, and ideally, all the time, everyone's working together on things. And in this particular instance, there was just, there was a lag, there were transitions that were happening, there was somebody that was, needed to be hired, we were looking for the right person, so there was a delay in that.
I think of fifth-grade organizational skills, I don't mean to speak disparagingly, but I don't know what is the point of that class, to be honest. And, sorry, that's negative, but it's, I really feel strongly about it. I hate when students' time is wasted. And I, before we purchase a resource, I mean, are we really going to stick with this course?
Teresa, these are excellent questions. I think right now, we're looking at this year, and having this year be as effective as possible.
Yeah.
This isn't a comment, and I, we're in a public meeting, we have to sort through what's said. I mean, right now, it's about getting this to work very, very well, with the teacher who's been hired, committed to doing everything she can. I think the important news here is that things, and you're an educator, and you're running a school, and you know, things suddenly happen, so nobody wanted to hire the day before--
Right, I understand, totally.
--an experienced teacher in, that came clear with Lauren Iorio in the class a lot, Dan in the class a lot, Melissa then in the class a lot, working separately with the teacher, that, and, you know, in Hastings, in many levels, we, teachers create their own material. And now it's clear, we had to, you know, come in and say, here's a very cost-effective curriculum to help this year be as strong as possible. We were not there yet, we will very much actively talk about the question you asked, you know, will, what will happen--
Yeah.
--with this course going forward. And even in the lateness of this hire, eyes were wide open on whomever's in that seat, if there's a change, let's think about that person and their skill set. Just so, because we, the board was very, rightly so, raising good questions last spring about this. I think you were patient with us to agree to have it go in as a board, and we know that, and, you know, Dan's looking at it carefully, Lauren's looking at it carefully, Melissa is, you know, we're listening. So, a lot of words, but I hope you hear us say--
I do.
--that we're committed to making it work this year. This curriculum piece will help a lot--
Yeah.
--that doesn't translate into a forever.
Okay.
If that's--
What grade is it? It's sixth grade, sixth and seventh grade.
Thank you, thank you, Teresa. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve business items 1 through 12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to placement and services for CSE and CPSC. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our placements and services for CSE and CPSC?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to personnel. Does anyone want to comment? We have a significant retirement this evening. I don't know, I didn't really prepare to comment on it, but I didn't want to step on anybody's toes.
Retirement?
Yeah.
I will.
Sure. Thank you, Jordi.
Yeah, so-- One of the things we're voting on is the retirement of Greg Stevens, who's been here for a long time, and is, I believe, chair of the math department. And I think he's a son of, did Greg go to Hastings High School?
Uh, he did.
So he and his family, his daughters graduated from Hastings High School.
His mother was a board member?
His mother was a board member. His mother?
He was.
Yeah. Lisa, right. That's right. And he's just been a wonderful teacher, a wonderful leader. He's an advocate for students. I think many young people were really turned on to mathematics by Greg. And he's just been a fighter in every way, both professionally and personally. And it's sad to have to see him go. But I think I also want to acknowledge that he has given an enormous amount to the school district, and we really so appreciate everything that he's done for the district and in the district over many, many, many years. And his wisdom and his grace and his knowledge have been just a gift to the district.
Jordi, thank you, thank you.
I would like to just add, if I may, I've worked very closely with Greg Stevens over many years, and I've had many wonderful moments with Greg. And one of my favorite memories was our work together with the mathematics committee, it was a K-12 committee, a few years after I got here, if I'm remembering correctly. And part of that, part of that process was, we wound up doing some intervisitation work, and he hosted. And it was such a pleasure to be in his classroom and watch him working with students. And you could see the passion he had for teaching, the passion he had for ensuring that students were learning, the creativity and his approach, and how he moved through the room, and how interested and engaged the students were, and it was really striking. And then the conversations that came out of that, after he was so generous for hosting everyone all at once in his classroom, was really striking. But behind the scenes, we've done lots of different types of work together, partnered with Kathy Williams with Stanford UQ, had some really fascinating conversations there. And he's always thinking so strategically and positively, and thinking about, he thinks in systems, so thinking about how all the pieces fit together, who the people are, what the needs are, and he has the trust and support of his colleagues, because his heart is really there, and his expertise is really there. So I will greatly miss working with Greg, and I wish him the very best at his retirement, lots of joy, many wonderful adventures, and it will be a loss. And I really, I'm sad, and I'm also very happy for him.
Sounds like working with him, the way you describe it, is like working with a mathematician at their finest, the way he could think about systems and--
Yeah.
Can I just add on, I was trying to remember the phrase you used, because it was very accurate, but just watching him sometimes teach math to my son, one of the unique traits that he had is noticing what you're noticing and what you're not getting, and like, constantly shifting and, you know, bringing perspectives of things. He was a very hands-on teacher, in a very unique way for mathematics, so absolutely lovely words, and certainly a loss, but we wish him well in retirement, for sure. Anyone else? Are there any other questions?
When is his retirement effective as a--
End of the--
December, this--
End of the year, sorry.
Oh, end of--
This December.
Got it.
Yeah, so very soon. Are there any other questions or comments regarding our appointments, amendments, retirements, or resignations? No? Is there a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to minutes, this would have been from November 4th. Are there any questions or comments regarding our minutes? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the November 4th meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to committee reports, we're going to hear from Facilities Committee and Policy. I'll start off with the Facilities. As Maureen noted in her report, we met with a lot of the technical partners, not this Monday, but last Monday, and what they generally provided to us was a review of the initial fieldwork done at Burke, planning for Proposition 3. And the real headlines there, one of the largest concerns that came up in the community was the sort of downstream effect, no pun intended, of what the Burke project would have on the wetlands. And by two different criteria, what came out was that, according to New York State DEC, there was no linkage whatsoever between the Burke project and those wetlands. The number one reason for that is because there was this 100-foot setback, for any work you're doing, if it's within, if it's 100 feet or more away from the wetland, then it's not considered to be related, and we're, you know, beyond that boundary. The other thing is, when we were looking at it as board members, when we were looking at the mock-up of the Burke estate, at that point, the technical partners had not done a full, deep, thorough look into the, you know-- a full, deep, thorough look into the, um, you know, hydrology and, and topography of the Burke Estate. So what they showed us on the diagram was the sort of worst-case scenario. If you might recall, we had two large retention ponds that were shown in the final diagram that we voted on. Um, that was the worst-case scenario. If there was not, if that field could not accommodate drainage, we would need two retention ponds. So the other reason why the New York State DEC sees this as so separate is the, the actual report on the amount of soil and how low the water table is, it's all good news. It's much more soil, the water table's much lower than anticipated, um, the capacity of that land to both hold and filter water naturally by itself, sequestering it, um, is, is greatly above what we thought. So in the, I don't know if it's public yet, but on the revised, it is public?
Yeah, we posted the notes.
Okay.
The minutes are posted.
The minutes are posted as well. Um, in the revised drawing, you'll see there's a very small retention pond, and that's really going to be serviced just by a portion of the baseball outfield and the softball field itself. Yeah, so, um, it was very, it was very good news. Um, and the other thing that, I think the mental model, certainly that I had, was that water was going to flow, it's going to collect on the Burke Estate and then flow downhill into the wetlands. What we looked at in great detail was that that is actually not the case. It's, you know, the, the upper Burke field, it's, it's going to do what it does right now. Water drains into the field itself, and it stays or evaporates. It doesn't go to the water table. It's just sequestered in the same way a pond is. Pond fills with water, and the water stays there, it doesn't drain through the earth because of the, the factors of the soil beneath it. And the water table, I think he told us he went down 10 feet?
Twenty.
Oh, 20 feet, right. So the state, you have to be, when you have a situation where, right, where water is sequestered above, uh, groundwater, it has to be a three-foot minimum. They went down 20 feet, they still hadn't found, uh, groundwater. So the point is, um, it's, the water's going to just drain into the field surface itself. Nothing's going to escape from upper Burke. Um, and on this situation with the small detention pond that we're putting in, that's going to service the softball field, which is artificial turf, and the portion of the baseball outfield, it's the same situation, basically, where the water is going to collect in that detention pond, and there are systems in place to, to filter that water. And any debris or anything, it, it doesn't flow down into the wetlands. It's going to, in the same way that water sequesters itself under the Burke field, it's going to sequester itself, the debris, I'm sorry, from that water's going to sequester itself in the detention pond. And the, the idea is, um, there's no real metric for it, but if you're concerned about what's in that soil, every several years, every 10 years, you just come and scoop it out, and you clean out, you clean out that, that, that detention pond. And one of the first questions that came up was, if it comes time to do that, have we provided easy access so that, you know, that we can do it without disturbing the work that's done? And the answer is yes, that they've actually thought about that. And so what we'll examine, um, and what's been submitted to the state, um, is that they've planned for access, so if we ever have to drain that pond or clean it out, it's really easy to do. So that's sort of the...
I think there were two other things
Sure.
That stand out to me, um, from the meeting. Uh, one is that we spoke about, um, the specifications. There's a lot of concern, even in the, still in the community, in terms of, um, microplastics and PFAS. And so we were working, talking with them and working out the specifications that will be in place before we send it out for a bid, that will include lots of language with regard to PFAS and the, um, lack thereof, in, in the way that we move forward. That was one thing. And then we were also fortunate to have Don Irvin from the community, who's been doing a lot of work in the wetlands. He came to the meeting, and he, um, stayed and spoke with, um, our partners, and they had a big conversation with regard to the wetlands and what, what, what they knew and his concerns and what he's been doing. And I thought that was a really good, um, and useful communication of information and, and addressing real concerns that he, he's very knowledgeable about. I think they were kind of on the same page about...
I know why you also understood better...
Speak into the mic.
I'm sorry.
I don't want to put words, you know, just since you mentioned Don, and I don't know if this is your takeaway, Alex and Jordi, but I think in addition, you know, speaking about what Alex just broke down about how things work up top, I think he then had a better understanding as well.
Yeah.
So I think all of us really learned that day that, you know, that, that there, there won't be any additional runoff going into those areas, and how they were addressing what was happening up, up top, I thought he seemed to...
Yeah, so one of the really interesting things that Don said was, you know, he said that the, the wetlands has a larger capacity for natural filtering than what, what's currently happening there. Because the, as, as Maureen pointed out, the existing older detention ponds need some work done to them. And, and Don felt that there was, there was additional restoration, not just detention ponds, there was restoration of, you know, fauna, I'm sorry, flora, um, that could happen there, not fauna, pears, pears everywhere, um, that would actually enhance it. So the outlook for sort of restoring that, that parcel to its natural role as a filter is, is really strong, and it was really heartening to hear from him, and he's had eyes on it so close up for so long.
Yes.
He knows every square foot of it. So, uh, anyway, it was all very, very positive news.
Yeah, and I think also, I mean, not that we'll get into that as far as, but I think that it's a larger conversation about, you know, a lot of water comes from not only our property right into that space. So I think it's also about, you know, the drainage in the existing areas and that, and Don spoke to that, you know, I think we did, it's not as though like all the water is being generated from above.
Right.
Right? And I think, similar to what we experienced at Reynolds Field, I think it's a larger conversation, and, and when our architects and engineers are evaluating it, right, it's also the, the runoff that's generated from the surrounding area, that, that all goes through that area.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, the impact of expansion or, you know, new things being built, and, you know, where the water's going, which is something that I think why we've seen like larger amounts of water, just, you know, anyway, but I say that just to say, Don actually spoke to that, and I think it's connected to, I'm not saying, you know, that's what it is, but, but what then can be done to improve or enhance or, or make better, even beyond, because it has a larger capacity than it is currently serving, or however, you know, he put it. So I think that's where, as I mentioned before, getting that professional in to do that evaluation, and we would be looking for like Don, because he has a, a good amount of expertise and understanding of the area, and actually spoke to, right, Alex, how the water, like what was flowing into that space. He kind of spoke to how the water, where it's coming from, and...
That was a good meeting.
Right, it was very good.
One point on that, and kind of on the sort of systems above not connecting to the, um, to the retention was, it's really for kind of emergency overflow, um, not, not really a part of the design of the upper kind of part of it, right? Um, and the design, storm designs require 10-year, 10-years, we're building for 100-year storm event
Correct.
Plus doubling the size. I thought that was very powerful. And the idea that like an example of a flash flood, you get three inches of water in an hour, they're designing for 30 inches
Mm-hmm.
In an hour. So it's really going to be overdesigned very intentionally.
Yeah, that's a very, that's a very, I'm glad you brought that up, I'd forgotten about that, because one of the things they brought up was that the state requirement, correct, it's 10, you know, 10-year flood event, and we're designed to 100, but even then, he said, you know, these days, the climate event we're most concerned about is not overall rainfall, it's the speed of it, flash flooding, things like that. And again, you know, we drilled down, we spent an hour and a half there just drilling down into each of these things, and the answers were, were ready and apparent, and very thoughtful.
It was very helpful.
No, I, I mean, I think to put it in a simple, and the, the minutes are posted, and it was good that L.A.N., and we reviewed them, Maureen and I did, to, and then we actually had Alex look at it and make sure they fit, fit the meeting, but it was helpful, they had such detailed minutes. But to put it in very plain terms, you could see why residents saying, okay, you're putting down a plastic field that's at an upper level, so just naturally it's all going to flow, it's understandable, that it's all going to flow right off, go right downhill, and all this. Well, no, because these fields are designed to absorb downwards 30 inches per hour. And as Maureen said, it's, and I was actually texting with Michael Schlechter about whether we have snow coming tomorrow, we do not. Supers north of me were worried about that. If you saw me laugh earlier, it was Michael's response, it was response to that northern weather report. Anyway, thank you, Michael Schlechter, out there for keeping a sharp. But anyway, I know from Michael that at three inches an hour, we're worrying about flash floods, but this is to absorb 30, so that's going down. Next, you've got 20-feet distance, so in a sense, you've got this catchment area, and, and the aim here is to have natural, Mother Nature control and manage. You've got that. So then instead of floating down, it's flowing out sideways, if we had the drawing we show you, to the catch basin that's at the backside, now not the wetland side, but the, actually in between the softball field and the baseball field is where that will now be. And you have on point three here, the bio-retentions explained a little bit, because that's deep enough that that also then could be a catch point for things you don't want flowing elsewhere. And periodically, you thought maybe it would be five years, might need to get that dredged out. So the things you don't want flowing out, volume of water than whatever's in the field, that's naturally getting contained below. If any of it can make, gets caught then in that catchment basement, basin, uh, and then there would be periodically dredged out. So that erases the need for some unproven technology to come in, because we actually are using natural, if you will, technology, and if that's not an oxymoron, uh, to, to deal with all this. And as, as Maureen, you put it, this is, in a good way, over-engineered.
Right.
So I, I, we, we went at this because you all have really good questions. It was great the Facility Committee could get together so quickly, it was great that they were all on site, because the in-person here, I think, helped a lot. It was great that, that Don was there, uh, from one perspective, but a very informed perspective, to feel validated by what, what was being said.
Yeah, it was very useful, actually. So moving on to Policy Committee update, I want to thank David for preparing some notes. Thank you.
Yeah, hi everyone. Um, so coming out of the policy meeting from last week, uh, we went over some really important policies, uh, around, amongst other things, sexual harassment, DEI, um, as well as instruction for, um, our English-language learners and multi-language learners, which, uh, so, um, just kind of going down the list of policies that we would like to, uh, send to first read. First one is Policy 4326. Uh, this is instruction for English-language learners. Um, I'm going to note that originally coming out of the meeting, we did not approve this for first read. Um, I, I, I understand, and Melissa, I think you could probably explain a little bit more, but I know some language was added, uh, around multi-language learners in addition to English-language learners, if you just want to...
That's right. So the additions that you see in purple, and actually the first strike-through didn't come through. So the Board of Education believes that students who take out by reason of foreign birth or ancestry, because there are lots of reasons why people could have limited English proficiency, so that was a recommendation coming from Dr. Janice Mateo Toledo as E&amp;L Coordinator. And then also the addition of the language of MLLs, multi-language learners, just to be more, uh, more inclusive. So it's not only English-language learners, but it can be multi-language learners. So those were the only changes.
Um, thank you. Uh, so additionally, we had Policy, um, 0111, that's sexual harassment grievances under Title IX, I'll add, coming to this meeting, um, we had, in, in the past, I believe, the district had, um, uh, combined, uh, sexual harassment, um, in kind of one policy for both students and, and, uh, for, uh, faculty and staff. We've separated it now, so now, this is Policy 0111, and that is specifically, um, sexual harassment for students under Title IX. Um, that is approved and ready for first read. Additionally, we have Policy, um, 0110, sexual harassment, that's sexual harassment. Uh, actually, I'll start actually with Policy 10, 110.2, and that's specifically going to be sexual harassment in the workplace, which is an amendment of the original policy, 0110. Um, so 110.2 is approved for first read, and then, um, 110, which was the original, uh, combined sexual harassment policy, we are now saying that we would like to, um, approve that version amended for first read, but, um, what we want to be able to do is use that as a, uh, and this is per council use, as kind of more of an introductory statement to the overall sexual harassment kind of section in our, in our policy. It's a little confusing, but, uh, but I promise it makes all sense. Um, and then lastly, uh, and God, this is just, um, this is just Damaris Lang's meeting, right? This is, uh, Policy 0105, Diversity Equity and Inclusion in the District, which I know, um, this was something that was just a mission for Damaris, and so I'm happy that we're working on this, and able to, um, share this today. Um, this one, um, we are going to still be amending that, and so that is not ready for first read, um, but it sounds like, uh, going into the next policy meeting, we're going to try to get that for the following, uh, Board of Education meeting after that one.
Excellent.
Uh, and otherwise, uh, that is it. Progress.
David, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Uh, just to note, this is first read, so we're making them available to public. Trustees, obviously, we have a vote on them at the next meeting, December 3rd, likely. Um, so during intervening period, if anything comes up, you know, we can, can touch pace with the administrators.
I want to thank David for being very clear, and Maureen, you're in the meeting, and Catherine has since left, but, uh, several's went in the meeting, thought, ah, this is easy and straightforward, and we got into it, was tangled spaghetti of the nth degree, and you sorted it out and clarified it, got in the right order. Uh, and I do underscore what was mentioned about the, the DEI policy, because that was adopted soon after Dr. Lang and, and others came on the board. It was actually a real point of pride for Dr. Lang. Uh, this discussion was happening that evening after we all saw it, 6:30, so it, it, again, all these, these, the universe is, is, is around us and, and paying attention for Dr. Lang. This is on hold because you as a board has been shared in public, or you, we're looking at the DEI position and whether it should be administrative or stay as is. That decision really has to get made by the board prior to any modifications of this policy. You know, you really want to get the, get the horse before the cart on this one. So that, that was why I think, if I'm remembering correctly, that was one of the reasons to not, not bring it forward yet. But it does require some adjustments and modifications per the Chair Yebecker audit, correct? But we got to sort out that, because yours aboard...
This was specifically the recommendation to make the coordinator into administrative rule.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because that will affect some, a lot of aspects of, 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 of policy. The audit was asking for more clarity around the whole governance and management in this realm, which gets in part to how you, how we organize that, so...
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to second public comment, there isn't any public, so we'll move on to agenda review. There's also blank spaces right now. It, just to note for trustees, it's December 3rd, it's another Wednesday meeting, not Tuesday. Um, there's nothing in there yet. Right, it is blank, if I remember, yeah. Um, so moving on to Board of Education comments. Anybody would like to?
I wanted to say that I know this is our last Board of Ed meeting before Thanksgiving, and looking ahead, just hoping that people have, uh, a bit of a break, and have a good Thanksgiving, as we all have much to be thankful and grateful for. Um, and I'm thinking, to come full circle, thinking about Damaris, and thinking about her and honoring her this evening, and dedicating this meeting to her, I think we sort of touched upon her in many ways in the meeting, whether it was in policies or hearing from Maureen and Melissa, and I think everything that people said and all the board, I was thinking about it throughout the meeting, the comments that everybody on the board and Bill made about her, I think just so captured all the different parts of her and the different facets of her, um, and her, kind of her energy and her spirit and, um, her passion. I think passion is really a word that sort of describes her in many ways, how passionate she was and, and, and loving, and, um, there's just no words.
It's true. Jordi, thank you. Are there any other Board of Education comments? Is there a motion to, during our meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you Patrick.